So, okay, so after 5 o'clock, and let's call this board work session of the Silver Falls School District to order. No attendance, maybe? Okay, very good. Okay, our first order of business is the oath of office for Jonathan Edmonds. He's the replacement Zone 6 director. So Jonathan, there's oath of office. If you could just read that for us all and then sign it again.
Okay. So I, Jonathan Edmonds, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Silver Falls School District. I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the school board member according to the best of my ability during the term for which I have been appointed.
Very good, thank you. All right, there we go. All right, welcome. Do you have it going? Oh, excellent, okay, good. Just for the cameras' notice, everybody, it might not have noticed, but we had the camera took a little bit of time getting going, so we just started the meeting and the recording started a little bit later, so. Let me, first item up is our consent agenda. Do I have motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
A second? Okay, we have a motion for approval in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, here we go, item four. John Luntz is here, he's the director of John Luntz and Associates, and he's going to give us a good training presentation on educational equity. The floor is yours, John.
And I'm going to engage you in discussion in the process. Good. And before I begin, I'd maybe like to defer to Andy and people from the district, because there's two things that I think are most important. And the first one is your why. And the second one is that whatever your leadership role is around equity, you need to own it. It needs to be yours, not somebody else's. But it needs to be yours, and it needs to be located within the Silver Falls School District. I've worked with a lot of different districts, and it's different in every district. So kind of know your why, and then to own it are the most important things. So just some context, and some of you can help with this too, but it might be more to, you know, Andy and the district leaders, is we start out talking about equity because there are some inequities. So that's kind of the rationale. And so, the why is related to what are your inequities? Where are those gaps? Where are those places where some students and families are underserved, or underperforming, or not engaged? Again, a lot of different language around what the gaps might be, or where the disparities might be, or where there's need for improvement. But before I get into my presentation, I want to kind of get grounded in what do you think some of those are? Because this will get everywhere. And kind of defer to Andy maybe first, but then to have all of you kind of just do a little brainstorm.
I, the board and I, we've had a few conversations related to educational equity. John, the board is aware that we've had some pre-planning efforts on the part of some of the district team specific to educational equity. We also have had some pretty serious effort related to a conversation at the board level, even related to initiating board policy related to it. And I think it's fair to say that we moved forward in this process, but really didn't have and give, share with the board enough opportunity to have not only the conversation, but having a training related to precisely what you're discussing, or what you've mentioned, what is educational equity? And I won't speak for the board. They can truly give their own sentiments for this, but I will share that there are conversations that happen within our school district community, which is quite broad. It's the city of Silverton and all rural areas around it. And so as you can imagine, with a demographic makeup as a person can assume with that, there are a variety of, I think, definitions of what equity is all about. The board and I have both heard input related to equity being something that should be integrated in a diverse school district like ours in a way with some uniformity, and in some cases, some differences. Because we have some pretty defined rural communities. In fact, we just heard from Jonathan Edmonds the other night speaking about the importance of our rural schools, each one of our rural communities, and how that really makes a difference when we discuss educational equity around that. I believe there are some differences based upon the culture within the communities. So with that said, my why, and this is exclusive to me, is really to advance the topic of educational equity in this school district so that there is a clear understanding of how it can be applied here, and that really talking about a systematic approach to understanding what educational equity all applies all about. While we have some foundational work that's done, we don't have the true definition fully defined and understood by a school board, which I think is an existential status.
Any other words of context?
I think something that came up in our discussion of a potential equity policy, a concern that I heard in the audience was about how resources may be redirected. And so that is like a concern that, yeah, that came up. And I think that's one that we probably should be aware of as we're moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, my struggle is whenever this discussion starts, I come back to what is equity? And I can never get a definition. I look it up on the internet, and there's just myriad descriptions. And it's like, how do we have, you know, it isn't everything is equal. It's, but I don't know what it is. So how do we base a policy on something we still haven't defined? So I'm curious to see what you guys, what you have to offer for that.
John, I mean, we'll say one more thing too, is that it is a little bit difficult to identify because of, as Andy mentioned, we have the rural communities. We have the in-town communities. We have a various demographic, and everyone has different interpretation. So it's one thing to be in a strictly urban center, you know, where you've got one more primary focus, or maybe one main voice, but we don't have that. So attempting to identify, understand, and really input those needs, I think that's going to be the biggest challenge to get up to where we need to be.
And so students from rural backgrounds and rural schools, that's part of the conversation around equity. And so it's not always exclusively about race or ethnicity. There are many different factors that will be meaningful in your district.
I think also, when we were having a great discussion last fall about equity, and we had a lot of visitors come and speak about equity, I think they were getting it a little bit, I think there wasn't a clear distinction between equality and equity. And so, you know, there was a, you know, there started this picture going around, you know, social media that had, you know, a fence with the three...
I'll show that picture to the audience, so we can talk about it.
Yeah, right, yeah, and I think that was a great visual for people to look at, to, you know, for equality, equity, and liberation. So I think the definition between equality and equity might need to be understood as well, so.
And we'll take some time with that. And I, you know, so you all don't know me, some of you know me and know my work, but I've been working with schools and school districts in Oregon for over 25 years. Pretty much the last 15 or 20 years, a lot of it has been focused on equity. So I used to work for the State Department of Education, and for many years I served as a civil rights specialist for the State Department of Education. So that gave me kind of a grounding. But as I worked with different schools and different school districts, they're all defining equity a little bit differently. So I'm, at some point, I'm going to share with you many different definitions of equity for discussion, and then what emerges in terms of what you want it to be for, you know, Silver Falls School District. You'll do some brainstorming on that. You're not going to like come to absolute consensus and write the policy and send it off, you know, and tell everybody this is what it is, but you'll get a whole lot closer to what you want it to look like, you know, for the Silver Falls School District. That's one of my goals, you know, for this evening.
Can I chime in again? When Ron and I were at the summer OSBA conference, equity was, it is a big topic of conversation. So I think it is appropriate that we're continuing to talk about it.
Yes.
And I don't know, I've been trying to just figure out in my mind what it means and what our responsibility is as a board. And to me, I guess where I'm at now is thinking about access, and how students access their education, and how they access achievement. And so how we can make education more accessible to groups that aren't currently taking the, well, like I don't even know how to say it, but having trouble accessing their education. That, to me, is kind of where I'm at as an understanding, is where my understanding is.
Well, and access to education excellence achievement is a foundation of equity. And that's where we start to shift away from equal opportunity. Because equal opportunity may not, often does not provide full access for all students.
Because there are barriers for which the system does not provide a way to get over it.
And the system is constructed in a certain way that will benefit some more than others. And not intentionally, usually it's not intentional. So I think that gives us kind of a grounding and a context. And I'm going to go through the presentation. At various times, if you have a question or a comment, just stop and we'll talk. And there's a few times where I'm going to really engage you, where you'll be doing some of the work. So we're going to kind of look at data, we'll talk about your data, what's real in your district. But mostly, it's around the why. When we're looking at data, and this is going to come up often. So where are those gaps? Might show up in attendance, might show up in discipline, it might show up in test scores, it might show up in engagement in extracurricular activities. And it might show up in terms of, you know, parent involvement, which parents are more involved than others. So when we look at data, we're not just talking about test scores. We're also talking about stories and qualitative data. What you hear, and what teachers are hearing, and what parents are bringing up, and just... There's all, when I say data, don't just think that I'm from ODE and we're just looking at your test scores.
Right, right.
I used to be from ODE, and I never just looked at test scores. Test scores are one indicator of how students are doing. But mostly, you're going to increase your understanding of definitions and frameworks and the dimensions of equity. And my intention is that we come closer to really owning how you, as a school board, understand and want to define equity. Now, that may lead you to the development of some tools. So you might decide you want a policy. You might decide you want an equity lens. You might decide as a board, you want a framework. But that will be up to you, because it's, you know your district and you know your role, and what is your leadership role around equity? What's your relationship with the school district administrators, and all those sorts of things? How does that play out? How do you make it real? How do you, as a school board, take ownership and have a voice around equitable outcomes for students? And you're going to hear me use that term often, equitable outcomes. And that's kind of the beginning of moving away from equal opportunity to looking at equitable outcomes. And it goes back to, and this is part of my history with it, goes back to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And again, coming from a civil rights perspective. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act states that all students will fully benefit from the education that is provided. And so what does it mean to fully benefit? And that's where we start looking at data, you know, test scores, high school graduations, stories, those sorts of things. What do we mean by fully benefit? And so, again, a little context. So we're going to go back to data later on. I'd like to kind of start with this quotation. "The real voyage of discovery consists not in seeking new landscapes, but in having new eyes." So how are we going to see differently? What are we going to look for? And context for this for me was when I worked at the Oregon Department of Education, we used to put out an annual report called the Early Leavers Report. And everybody in the school districts referred to it as the dropout report.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was it called?
It was called the Early Leavers Report.
Oh, the early leavers, okay.
Back in the day, everybody referred to it as the dropout report. But the new eyes were when ODE, the Department of Education, was looking at the data and drawing some conclusions from it, because we wanted to learn. What we did at that point in time is we looked at the characteristics of the students who were leaving early, who were dropping out. So they were highly mobile, they were behind in credits. You know, there were three or four characteristics of the students. Those were the eyes that we were examining the data through. With an equity lens, we kind of shifted that to ask the question, what's going on in the schools? How are the schools, what are the conditions in the schools that are contributing to students leaving early and to students dropping out and not graduating? And it's not either or, it's kind of a both and. So it's looking at early leavers, looking at those who didn't graduate with a new set of eyes. So that's part of the work of that. So we already started this, we're going to have just a general discussion, and then we'll get more into it. You've already seen the slides. Have all of you seen those slides? Let's look at the slides first then. Some of you haven't seen them. This is the very famous slide in Oregon now, to kind of get at the difference. What do you see there? What do you see as the difference in that slide between equality and equity?
I think what you said about equal opportunity, there's an equal opportunity to stand on a box in front of the fence.
And the same sized box.
And yes.
Yeah, but are all three of those equally, three of the young people, are they all three of them equally and fully benefiting?
And they're not all three accessing the game.
Right. So it's all, might be equal opportunity, but it's not equal access or equitable access. And that's where we shift to this first, this next slide around equity, which gets at one of the principles of equity is that each, and let's call it those three individual students trying to watch the game. You just kind of go with the metaphor and put them in the place of students. Each student there is getting what they need in order to fully access watching the game.
So I have a question for you. You know, I think this might be an assumption that people make, or I don't even know, I don't know the answer. When you talk about equitable outcomes, you don't mean that every student must score the same way on a state test, or... Yeah, so can you speak to that a little more?
Well, this is as much for you as it is for me. But from my lens and the work that I'm doing, we're talking more about growth and maximizing potential. And so, yes, there isn't a level playing field when students come to school, or even with resources at home. Access to computers, parents who know how to do math, all those sorts of things, even having a home. I mean, all those things, it's not a level playing field. So part of equity, a big part of equity is leveling that playing field. But it would be really naive to assume that all students are going to achieve exactly the same way. Students are different, they have different interests. There are, there are some differences in aptitude, especially for students with disabilities, so just as an example. But sometimes we assume, and I'm going to refer to my mom who passed away, who was a, you know, middle school English teacher. And this is way back in the day, but she assumed that some kids were smart and other kids were dumb. And so she had a few students get the As and the Bs, and a lot of students get the Cs and the Ds. She just assumed that it was them. But she didn't know that a lot of it was her. So just saying, so from an equity lens, not all students are going to get As, but you want each student to get the supports and the instruction and the engagement that works for them, so maybe the two boxes.
So the growth is a key thing, and that is part of the educational, our new ESU Act, right?
Yes.
So that's a big topic.
It's huge, yeah, it's huge. Our friends with the National Equity Project, they're located in the Bay Area of California, they're doing a lot of work nationally around equity. And they have this great visual, I might have to stand to do the, well, I'll stand. But so they, they say, here's where we are. There are students who are achieving at a high level, students at a low level. Equity is about closing the gap. But it's not like this, that the high students are going to come down and the low students are going to come up, but everybody's right in the middle. Equity is raising the achievement for all students while closing the gap. So that's, that's a visual that kind of gets at that. And, yeah.
Does any part of equity involve changing the goals as well? Right, so we talk a lot about, you know, everybody comes up to be the goal. You know, that presumes, it sort of presumes everybody is capable of the same exact thing. We're all very different. I have, I was never going to be an NDA player, not going to happen. It doesn't mean I didn't want to, but it just didn't going to happen. Is there an acknowledgement in this process that everybody is in fact different, and therefore having the same target doesn't make sense?
Yes, and this is where it gets really complex, because we do have different abilities in certain things, and we do have different physical structures and all. We also have different interests, you know, and we have different motivations. And we have different levels of creativity and all those sorts of things. So tremendous amount of difference. But the balance for that, and this is why it gets complex, is we used to justify that some are achieving at a high level and others achieving at a low level, because these are the students who are really bright, and these are the students who aren't. And so we have, that's where it gets, that's where the dialogue and the conversation really goes. And one of the questions around goals is, do we have the right goals for our district? Do we have the right goals for each class? Do we have the right goals for each student? And how do we differentiate that? And if the goal is on test scores, I mean, that's an easy one, because that's what the state, you know, and the US Department of Education has focused on for years. But the goals might be different. And I've actually been reading your goals and your strategic plan, and there are times where we're going to take a look at those, you know, this evening. And how do we take another look at those goals through an equity lens? And you may not need to change your goals. With some districts that I work with and some schools, we really kind of throw out the goals and the plan. I actually think your goals and your kind of your mission and, you know, your core values, I think they are ripe for equity being infused within them. But again, it's different with every school and with every district. Just in first plans, I'm thinking that equity can so live within your plans, within your goals, you know, within your vision, your mission, your core values. So we added the third slide, and some of you have seen this one. Because equity isn't just about giving more resources to some, it's also about eliminating barriers. And if the fence was a barrier, and we have some structural barriers, then how do we eliminate those? One of the easy ones to look at, it's easy at first slides, and then it gets really complicated, is to look at homework as a barrier. And we think, well, homework is equal opportunity. If you do the homework, you're going to learn. If you don't do the homework, you're going to get behind, and it's on you. But then we start thinking, not everybody has a home. And not everybody has support. And some kids go home when they have to work, or take care of siblings. Some kids don't have resources at home, and others do. And so homework in and of itself is a very inequitable practice. And so when we're talking about eliminating barriers, now we start looking at our practice of homework. It doesn't mean we throw out homework, and some schools have, by the way. But it doesn't mean that, but it means you start looking at, what are some of those structures that are in place that seem kind of okay, but when we look at them with an equity lens, we're thinking, maybe not. Maybe it's reinforcing, you know, the unequal playing field, reproducing outcomes that have been predictable and historical for years and years. The other part of the equity work is that a lot of the outcomes that you see in your district have been historical and predictable for years and years. And from the US Department of Education perspective, they say that there's a strong correlation between zip code and achievement, which we're really talking about, there's a strong correlation between poverty and achievement. Students in poverty are not doing as well as students who are middle-class and above. And is that about the students? Is that about lack of care and support from the families, or is it about us? So equity almost always has to start by looking at how are we contributing to that? What are our structures in place that are kind of reinforcing and stabilizing those inequitable outcomes? So that's, that's why I liked the third slide. And then some people who are way cooler than me, I'm just going to use my everyday language, because I'm only a little bit cool, who are way cooler than me, say that if we really have equity, those three young people will be playing the sport. Or they'll be in the stands, because, you know, they get, you know, they get free admission, so they can actually be in the stands, or they can be playing the sport. They don't have to be on the side watching, they can be with everybody else and be fully included. But I'm not that cool yet, so I just like the liberation side. So this is the part where I want you to engage a little bit. When we're talking about a definition of equity, there are, I've identified about 16 really outstanding definitions, and they're all slightly different. So I'm going to pass these around. There are two of each, I'm going to start at both ends. When you find, send them around, when you find one that resonates for you, hold on to it. But send the others around. Actually, I'll start from here, start some over here, start some here, and then send those down. When you find one that you want to speak to, hold on to it, and then send the others around.
Here, I'll give you two, and then I'll switch.
And keep them, keep them going around, just want to make sure Jennifer has a chance. Both Jennifers on the end, make sure they have their chance. Once you have your one that you want to read out loud, then just make sure other people have multiple choices. Just keep them circulating until everybody has one. If you don't like it, keep looking for a new one.
I know, what about that? I promise I'll get better. My kid's better than mine.
Distract him. Distract him and then grab it. Or you could both read the same one.
Right.
In the spirit of collaboration.
Has everybody had one?
Yes. I think we're all good.
Raise your hand if you got one, and then I'll read. Jonathan, you're close.
No, I've got one I can use. I was still reading some, but I can.
And Debbie, will you participate too?
I'm distracted right now.
Okay, it's your choice.
Does everybody have? I have, there's a plethora here.
You're invited to, if you wish.
Thank you, thank you.
So what I want to do is have each person read the one that you selected. Doesn't have to be the ultimate definition, but there's something that resonates for you. So read the one that you selected and share kind of your why for what resonates. And we'll start over here with Jennifer on this end, and we'll come all the way around.
I like this one because it's fairly simple and easier to connect to. All students achieve high levels of academic success regardless of any student's race, ethnicity, culture, neighborhood, income of parents, or home language. And I think that those things that are listed, you know, you could add to that potentially, depending on what your data is telling you.
Yeah, and it's very clear, you know, it's all students achieving academic success.
Well, and as I read this, I was thinking about your visual, where the top achievers are still increasing their achievement, both closing the gap and moving together in an upward motion.
Ross?
This one's a little bit longer. In education circles, the word equity is often controversial and confusing. When it's brought up to an economically diverse audience, those with affluence and privilege often become squeamish and start looking for the exits, while those in financial need often become more engaged, hoping that a focus on equity will bring relief and attention to what they lack. Such responses tend to occur because when the term equity is raised, it often invokes a zero-sum scenario perception, that if we do more for those who are disadvantaged, it will mean there will be less for the advantaged. When this occurs, in the pursuit of equity, which we define as a commitment to ensure that every student receives what he or she needs to succeed, is subverted by the assumption that there must be winners and losers, rarely is any progress achieved. That attempts to, appears to be a quote by Pedro Mogera. I think, for me, what resonates is that, I mean, the topic is very emotional. And what I've experienced so far participating in the school board is that when we do have members of the community come and speak, it's a very emotional subject. A lot of the issues, you know, are very personal, based on their own background, whether or not they come from affluent or not. So it just, it kind of sits with me, and this is what we occur, you know, month in, month out, week in, week out. So I think it's very, I think.
It's very real, and it captures kind of the interests and the emotions and the controversy that comes up.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I also selected a quote from Pedro Mogera. Equity defined: equality of opportunity with a focus on outcomes and results. But some bold points. Attention to addressing the needs of all students, recognition that not all students are the same, those with less will need more in time, attention, and support. And schools must confront the ways in which students are defined, are denied learning opportunities. And it's his last sentence that grabbed me, that I really like. We must implement strategies to support the most vulnerable students. Shelley liked it too.
I'll read this one. Mine is, authentically striving for equity requires interruption of current thinking, systems, and constructs, as well as behaviors. And that's from the Bay Area Coalition for Equitable Schools, now known as the National Equity Project. And that pretty much sums it up. I think this is a broad statement. It could be an umbrella statement, actually. And under this statement could be the specific details on how to do that, to mold it to your district, and how that works in your district. So that's why I liked this one.
I predicted, so I put that one.
Oh, thank you.
And you said this really clearly, but I just want to say it again. Did anybody else choose that quote? Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait until we come around to it.
Okay. This one says, for us, equity means each learner and community has the opportunity to succeed. We believe culture and diversity are assets for our communities that are to be respected from their multiple perspectives on learning, definitions of success, and pathways for self-determination. Accomplishing this equity priority, however, requires collective and coherent action to increase system effectiveness and produce results that are not predictable by race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status. I liked a lot that was in this one. I love the part where we're talking about opportunities, we're talking about the value of culture and diversity. We're talking about multiple perspectives on learning, different definitions of success, that played right into the comment I made a bit ago. Pathways for self-determination. I agree that there has to be action in order to achieve it. The only thing I think I will always probably be skeptical of is the idea that you can create results that are not predictable by socioeconomic status. I'm skeptical personally. I think you can do it by race. Ethnicity, I think you can make that blind. There are other factors in kids' lives that you will never overcome in a school district, usually, so.
So hold on to that, and we'll come back to that, and make sure that we come back to that. Debbie, are you in, or are you going to pass?
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
So I had the same quote as Jonathan, and the only additional, this is from Education Northwest, by the way. And the only additional comment that I made, a number of the same phrases and words caught my attention, but I really appreciated the word culture, because I think many times equity is, in the minds of some, is synonymous with pretty limited themes, like race and et cetera. And I think that we have to be very, very careful about not limiting it so much. And culture, even thinking of our own mission statement as a school district clearly has, and all our core values, has some reference to this, but going back to my original comments about the varying cultures within a school district, as diverse as ours, they have to be appreciated and they have to be recognized. The other word that caught my attention the most as well is the word collective. It's similar to even having this conversation here with the collective board and the diverse board, is the importance of having that same conversation within the community and within the organization itself.
Yeah, and I'll just add, one of the school districts I'm working with has adopted this phrase called collective efficacy. It's us, we're accountable, we're responsible, and we're going to collaborate. And who's the us? But who's in the collective? That's the inclusion part of equity.
Well, I selected the same definition that Shelley did, so authentically striving for it there. I think for me, the reason that it resonated with me the most is because I think a lot of the things that we've been doing at the high school level really recognizes that regardless of the nine feeder schools that give us our high school students, we have to come together and figure out, how do we help each one of those kids? And also recognizing, I think we talked about the socioeconomic piece, is that we can't control what they go home to, and we also have to be very careful not to disrespect what they're going home to. And so fostering that relationship of, hey, when you're here, or when you need something, we're going to think outside the box to get it done.
Yeah, and that's part of the interrupting thinking. Think outside the box. We can't think about their families through a deficit lens.
The, well, their parents don't do this, or their parents don't do that. It does not, it cannot matter to us. It has to be what is here, what is now.
Mine has different words, but same message. Student achievement belongs to each student, and will not be predicted by race, ethnicity, family economics, mobility, gender, disability, or initial proficiencies. So what I love about that is that each kid has the opportunity to reach their own potential, and that the baggage that they come in with doesn't have to become their barriers in terms of their education.
Yeah, and what I love about that one is it adds that term initial proficiencies. So I also teach, I'm adjunct faculty at U of O at Lewis and Clark and PSU, and I teach in their leadership admin programs. And we all identify words, certain words that just really tweak us, you know, and cause us great angst. And this is one that I bring up at home, because one of the people I live with uses this term and always tweaks me, and always. And I only live with one person, so you know I'm talking to. The person that I've been married to now for almost 24 years. And we're doing great together. But the word that she uses is related to initial proficiencies. She, like many other educators, will use the term ability a lot. And this is where it's complex, because I think we often mistake initial proficiency for ability. And at the elementary level, those students who are the early and the fast readers, teachers without thinking about it kind of assume that they're a little smarter, they're more advanced. And really, all they, most of them have really had is just earlier exposure to reading, earlier exposure to words and the alphabet and all. So they come in with initial proficiencies, they do well, they get rewarded. And I'm thinking back to myself, I'm not as ashamed as I used to be, but because I've been talking about it now for a long time, so I've almost let it out of my system. But when I was six, seven years old, I really thought I was smarter than most of the other kids in my class, because I was told that. I was rewarded that way. I got, you know, I got the best grades, and my teacher really liked me, and my mom wanted me to be the high achiever, wanted me to be the best. And so I internalized that I was smarter than other kids, and that's kind of shameful. But I didn't know any better. But while I'm internalizing that, some of the other kids are internalizing that they're not as smart, or they're less smart. And teachers are making judgments, whether they're explicit, conscious or unconscious, implicit. And so when you add in that term of initial proficiencies, it requires us to slow down and reflect. What assumptions are we making? What messages are we sending to the kids? One of my favorite teachers has a little sign on her door that says, quiet geniuses at work, because the sense is every student is really brilliant, and they perform that way. They internalize it. And this is the old Stanford University research test of about, now it's about 55 years ago. It's old, but it's been reproduced many times. It's when some teachers were told that they had the most creative and the brightest students, and other teachers were told that they didn't have the most creative and the brightest. There was no difference in terms of background or skill level or anything. But the teachers who believed that they had the brightest and the most creative students, those students outperformed students in the other classrooms, because the teachers believed it, and the teachers predicted it. So that, again, when we're talking about equity, it does require interrupting not only systems, but interrupting thinking. And interrupting doesn't necessarily mean that we stop thinking, it just means we slow down and we question, what do we believe, what do we value, what do we expect? So discussion, what's emerged? What are some of the themes that are emerging that are important to you as a school board member or as a district leader around equity? So if you were to kind of, we're not going to do this today, but if you were to start thinking about, what would be something key in the Silver Falls School District's understanding of equity? What might be some of those phrases or concepts, some that we just heard? What stands out? What do you highlight?
What I like is that I didn't hear, when you hear about this topic and you read about it, there's always this concern about putting people in socioeconomic groups. And all of this statement, and so far in your presentation, none of that is taught. You're constantly talking about individuals, and I'm a work that. I want to look at it as individuals. And I'm, this is very, very pleased with what I'm seeing so far.
And I want to say that I think that is foundational, that we're looking at each and every student, and, so there's the and with it. In order to look at patterns, and in order to look at which groups are being served and underserved, it's also important to start looking at those groups and to disaggregate data.
Oh, yes.
So it's the yes and, but the foundation comes back to each individual student.
That's the overlying thing, the group is part of the smaller, but yes, yeah, we're on the same page there.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, you and I are on the same page.
Yes, but, yeah, exactly. So anyway, that's my input.
You know, Jen, for me, one of the first things that really jumped out is, it's not only focusing on the individual student, but making sure they have that family support network at the extension, because I think that's a big part of the success. And you touched on that earlier, whether or not someone may be homeless, or have that family support. So I think that's a really big key that we need to focus on, maybe conveying the message in how can we engage the parents, or whatever structure they have it on, they all got that foundation.
Yeah, and again, a strong agreement, some of our schools and districts will actually prioritize partnering the families and family engagement as one of their three or four top equity priorities. Also understanding that for some students, I'm not saying this is for a lot of students, but for some students, their families are actually going to be, will not be healthy engaged partners. We're talking about some families that have really destructive dynamics going on, and in those cases, we almost have to be, as a school, we almost have to become like a family for those children. But a lot of families aren't engaged because they don't know how. They don't know, we haven't done the outreach to them, we've kind of told them what we expect of them, but we haven't learned how to partner with families, especially at the elementary level. Profound research, Karen Mapp, but many other people, my friend Anne Ishimaro at the University of Washington has a whole research project around that. And when families are engaged, especially for those that have been disengaged, or low-income families, or Latino families, when they, when we learn how to partner and engage with them, achievement goes, and engagement of the students goes up tremendously.
Now, I will say this, I do know that, at least at the high school level, we do have administrators that do reach out proactively to the families, and there has been measured success with that.
Yeah.
So, which is great.
Yeah, very promising. And part of my work too is to look at what's going on all over the nation. So I'm regularly accessing the Education Trust, and they're identifying schools and districts that are being highly successful. And we'll come back, especially around, can we close that gap with low-income students? There actually is some emerging research on some schools that are doing that well. But yeah, how do we do that? How do we increase student engagement and increasing partnering with families is a big piece.
Can I just interject there? I think, and Jen can correct me if I'm wrong, but the new social-emotional curriculum that we're adopting and implementing, I'm assuming that that's part of it, is becoming, she he said family-like, like the school for some of the families needs to become family-like for that child, and I'm assuming that that addresses that kind of community building and coming together.
Yeah, yeah, there's a few components in that curriculum. There's a home connection that happens each week, there's a cross-age buddies connection to build that support in with older kids in the school, and then there's also the community building within the classroom.
So I think that's a really great, it's another way, I mean, it helps all of our students.
It's another layer of support.
Yes, it helps all of our students, but it's like a green, if you're looking at the RTI triangle, it's the green level, we are doing this for all students. And some students might need it even more, but we're doing it for everyone.
Yeah. The intersection between emerging work around social-emotional learning and trauma-informed care, when that gets connected with culture and equity, it's like, the outcomes are tremendous. Because we can also do social-emotional learning, but do it through a quite Because we can also do social-emotional learning, but do it through a quite middle-class lens, which might not connect with the culture of some of our students. And so when we do social-emotional learning really well, there is that collaboration with families. And that's, a lot of my reference goes to the group called Castle, which is kind of leading some of the national social-emotional learning, because they really do connect culture within that. And it requires us to be culturally responsive to the families and the students, as well as creating this culture at school that is connecting and validating that every student feels like they belong, you know, that what they feel and believe and think and contribute is valuable and meaningful. And that's, when we connect the social-emotional learning with the equity and culturally responsive work, it's powerful. And some, and again, I don't know how your model is being implemented. Some of our schools are implementing social-emotional learning with a real powerful cultural framework within it and others aren't.
Interesting.
What else?
One thing that popped out to me a bit ago, actually, that I hadn't maybe connected to this conversation yet, but you know, we're talking a lot about the students, we're talking about opportunity, we're talking about board policy, school policies, school practices. Maybe one of the elephants in the room is that you can look at any school, any one of us can do this, and you know, everybody knows there's better teachers and worse teachers at that school.
Yes, yeah.
And, you know, I love Bucare, my kids have gone there for the last 17 years or something, right? I can look, there were some teachers that I could, any day of the week, it's, okay, let's replace that one. You're never, how do you ever possibly achieve equity if just within a small school setting, you're going to have the outstanding teacher and the crappy teacher, right? How do you ever close that?
I think collaboration is part of a key to that personally, just based on the work that I do in my school. Teachers work in teams and they do data teams where they decide on an instructional approach. They all do the same instructional approach, they look at their data. If some teachers have better results than others, the others do what, you know, try to learn from that teacher. So, you know, we talked in July, I think, about more time for teachers to collaborate. And that's, to me, I see power, a lot of power in that because the system moves forward, everybody's moving forward together. Isn't that the tagline for our district? I didn't plan that. Everybody moves forward together as a group and it's not, individual teachers aren't just saying, well, this is my students and my class, they are all of our students and we care about all of them and we're working together to move everybody forward. So anyway, that's just my response.
But I think I'm talking more about the soft skills rather than the curriculum, the process, the procedure. I'm talking about which teachers inspire you. You can't fix that, right? Some do and some don't.
So I want to comment on that. And I'm going to go back to what you said and kind of connect with the research from the Education Trust and any other kind of research organizations. There seems to be three, there are about eight or 15 characteristics of schools that are actually getting equitable outcomes, closing gaps and thriving and doing really well. Three of the ones that seem to come up almost in every study is number one, teacher buy-in, that the teachers are on board, not just with the word, but there's a sense that every teacher is a teacher for every student in the school. So teacher buy-in. Second one is instructional leadership, which often could be principals or assistant principals or instructional coaches. But the third one is the collaboration, that there's actually structured time for teachers to collaborate and that collaboration time is actually effective, that the teachers actually look forward to it. Because a lot of our schools have introduced professional learning communities and the teachers are looking at data, but the teachers don't look forward to it. So if you kind of organize it in a way that the teachers are excited, they're bringing problems or practice, they're collaborating, they're learning, they're not being judged and all those sorts of things, that type of collaboration time that's structured seems to make a difference. Again, just highlighting some of the factors. Going back to, like, we do have some inspirational teachers and some of the soft skills and teachers who really connect and teachers who are very culturally validating and respectful and students love them and they have good stories. I mean, they make it meaningful, they make it relevant and there's some really great teachers. I like to use Forest Grove High School as an example around that and then I'll also kind of quote the US Department of Education. Forest Grove High School, this is one back about 12 years ago, they had a lot of students in their freshman-level math classes getting Ds and Fs. That seemed to be the turning point, you know, the students got Ds and Fs in their ninth-grade math classes, that that was kind of a predictor, that they weren't going to do well, that they weren't going to go on to do higher math and that they weren't going to take chemistry. There was just, for years, that was just the assumption, it was almost like a weed-out class if you're in a college, you know, and you want to be a pre-med student, you take math and chemistry and half the students bomb out and decide, well, I'm not going to be a doctor. Well, that's not what we want in high schools. And so they, in John O'Neill's first year as principal, we had his whole leadership teams spend the first year learning. And they went and visited about 48 school districts and half in Oregon, half out of state. And they spent almost all their professional development money on learning. And they came back and one of the things that they decided was they were going to have their, the best math teachers who were teaching the higher-level math, you know, the pre-calculus and, you know, the juniors and the seniors and the honors math. They decided they were going to try to persuade those teachers to teach the ninth-grade math classes and they succeeded. And those teachers took it on and the outcomes just, you know, changed dramatically. And they made a priority, that this is the most important part of the school that next year is increasing the scores of our ninth graders in their math classes and eliminate, reducing the Ds and Fs and reducing also the racial, ethnic, you know, cultural predictability. And the teachers took that on and they thrived. There was a whole notion of having some of the best teachers teaching students with the greatest needs.
So that's the disruptive part you were talking about, right?
Yeah, that's disrupting the system and the practices. And then the US Department of Education has been saying for years, we want our most experienced teachers teaching the students with the greatest needs. So when I was at the State Department of Education, the Title I classes and the Title I teachers were usually the brand-new teachers and the more senior teachers were teaching the Title I classes. So how do we disrupt that? So our best teachers, our most experienced teachers are teaching the students with the greatest needs. And then it's way more complex than that.
Right.
Because you've got an elementary school and you've got two second-grade classrooms. Well, which one has greater needs? They're all.
How do you achieve equity?
Yeah.
Because, right? So if you give all the kids that need more help the better teacher, is that equitable to the kid that maybe didn't need that extra help, but now gets stuck with, you know, burned-down salad?
And do you want to put all the kids who have the greatest needs in the same classroom?
Right.
Which doesn't work well either. So it becomes way more complex, but the whole notion of how do we start to push back against that? How do we ensure that every student, like, let's say you have, I always like to divide teachers into three quadrants just for fun. So one-third are outstanding, one-third are pretty good and one-third are below average. And you've got K through five, you want to make sure that every student has at least two outstanding teachers in those five years. And they only have one or two teachers that are, you know, below average. And there's no quantification for that, right? Elementary principals are pretty good at that, you know, in terms of placing students if they're doing that with an equity lens, because we do know that there are some teachers who are just amazing. And some teachers are amazing with some kids, but not all.
True.
You know, like my mom, is a middle school, you know, English teacher, she was great with the high-achieving girls, you know, but none of the boys liked her at all. And I went to that school and I was younger and I got bullied by the boys who did write my mom. So it's really personal. But these are the nuances that we kind of know when we're looking, you know, through an equity lens.
Thank you.
I'm going to quote Curtis Lytton, this is just another frame to differentiate between equality and equity, and that's in your handout too. This is one I'll read out loud. "In seeking equality rather than equity, the processes, structures and ideologies that justify inequity are not addressed and dismantled." So there are some structures, there are some processes, there are some ideologies that really allow and reproduce inequity. "Remedies based on equality assume that students have the same opportunities and experiences." Ray, and Curtis and Glenn Singleton, Curtis Lytton and Glenn Singleton prioritize race in their work. So that just gives you their context. He says, "Race and experiences based on race are not equal. Thus, the experiences that people of color have with respect to race and racism create an unequal situation. Equity, however, recognizes that the playing field is unequal and attempts to address the inequality." And I believe focusing on race is really important for some districts. I kind of reframe that sometimes to look at mindset and teacher expectations and student beliefs. So if we know that some of our students already have internalized that they're not brilliant, then our work is to help them believe that they are. Because it's not a level playing field. You might, let's say you've got 24 students in a classroom and you know that four or five of them are coming in not feeling that confident and not willing to take risks and not willing to say what they know because they've already been beaten down a little bit, they've already internalized some. So that's how we kind of shift that, we recognize it's not equal. And we need to do some things differently with that group of students. Okay, I'll add another, this is emerging research and this makes it, there's a lot of controversy in this, but I'm just going to go to the controversies because it'll come up anyway. For the students who are learning that the United States is a meritocracy, that anyone can succeed and we have the stories of heroes, and they believe that the people who are on top are on top because they're brighter and they work harder. I mean, that's kind of at the heart of meritocracy. And we teach that, either directly or indirectly. For students coming from a low-income family, you know, especially generational poverty, when they start to believe that, they believe that they and their family are not as good as, not as bright, not as hardworking, and their performance actually goes down. So the belief in meritocracy actually is harmful for those students. This is why it's controversial, because meritocracy is kind of true. There's a lot of truth to it, but it's also kind of not true. And so how do we actually talk about that? Anyway, equality, equity. This is like, this is a lifelong dialogue when we're doing equity work. Because our nation, the United States, was actually founded on, not the reality, but was founded on the principles of equal opportunity. Wasn't real, just in terms of who could be citizens and who could vote. But equal opportunity was the founding principle. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 shifted that a little bit in terms of equity, in terms of each person should be able to fully benefit from the services that they receive. So it's shifting away from equal opportunity. And we're right in the middle of that right now. We don't see it the same way. There's going to be controversy, even among, you know, a group of teachers, there's going to be some controversy. They have to be able to talk and have some dialogue and be engaged and kind of own where it is that a school and that a district is headed. This discussion is really important. To adopt an equity lens or equity policy without having time for discussion has not proven to be valuable for almost any school or district. But to have the discussion, to have the ownership, that's where I kind of started off with, let's hear why and you need to own it. The Montgomery County School District, just outside of Baltimore in Maryland, is one of the school districts that we look to for tools, but also for their success. They've had a tremendous amount of success in terms of outcomes and in terms of closing gaps, raising achievement for all, increasing engagement. And their framework addresses three levels of the equity work. And many of our organizations will adopt an equity framework. So I'm not saying you need to, but it's one of the tools. Their framework centers on the personal. This is a lot of the work that I will do with equity teams and with different groups. We have to start with ourselves. What are our beliefs? What are our values? What are our biases? What are our stereotypes, our privileges, our expectations? In what ways have we learned to see certain students through a deficit lens, just because it's all around us? And how do we start to unlearn that and start to see who the students really are and the assets that they bring and their families? So that's the personal work. And some of it involves unlearning. So some of the things that are so familiar to, like homework, I'll give that as the example, really worked for me as a kid. I went home, I did my homework. I had help from my mom. My mom had just gone back to college. My mom went to college on the GI Bill. My mom was in World War II and so she went to college on the GI Bill. While I was at school, she was in school studying to become a teacher. So I had a lot of help. We had books around the house. Homework worked for me. I never questioned it. So that was my bias. I was like, homework is equal opportunity. And the kids who weren't finishing their homework, I made negative assumptions about them. So part of the work is personal. We need to have time to slow down, look at ourselves, look at our assumptions, beliefs, biases, privileges. Another level is institutional. What are the ways that we have organized learning and engagement? What are the ways that our schools reproduce inequality? And Pedro, a couple of you quoted Pedro O'Gara, he's one of my favorite writers and speakers and have the opportunity to hear him many times. And he says that our schools are perfectly structured to get the outcomes that we're getting. So if we have inequitable outcomes, then what do we need to do? How do we need to take a second look at our structures and our systems? How are we doing middle school? I love to look at middle school. Because my, one of the areas that kind of is right at the heart of my work, because we all have areas that we're excited about. You know, that's the good thing about being on a team, is somebody's really excited about reading, somebody else is, you know, really excited about, you know, service learning, you know, somebody's really excited about math and science. And I'm glad somebody else is excited about math and science because I'm not. But I am excited about school culture and student discipline and kids being, you know, referred, suspended and expelled. I'm excited about that because I think our system has been set up in a way that benefits some and not others. So when I'm talking about institutional, I'm encouraging the schools that I work with to take a completely new look at how we do discipline. And Pedro O'Gara has this great article and I'll send it on to Andy, it's this great article called "What Discipline Is For." And at the state level, we've now shifted our language to describe suspensions and expulsions as exclusionary practice. So when we suspended a child or we expelled them, we're actually excluding them from learning. They're getting behind, they're not being able to benefit from learning. So can we do it differently? And Pedro O'Gara suggests that the purpose of discipline is actually to reconnect students to learning. And again, we don't all have to agree, but we need to have the discussion when we're looking at our structures and our systems. That's the one that I go to because I have passion around that one. When we move towards science, some of my colleagues who have great, and some of them are science teachers who have great passion around science, they're really moving more towards collaboration. And every student is working in a circle with other students around science. And they're excited about that, but it's kind of shifting the way learning is structured. And again, I don't have that expertise, you know. We all have different areas of strength that we can bring. We all have different areas of strength that we can bring. But what do we need to do that, to examine, how are our systems, are our structures resulting in the achievement of some or all? Because we have some that are just amazing. Like when my kids were in school, everybody had to pay a certain amount to participate in sports. Some students were excluded from that. So we had a club soccer team and there was one kid who couldn't participate because the kid couldn't afford it and couldn't even buy soccer shoes. The parents just kind of contributed to allow that student to make it. But it was set up. That was a structural obstacle, having to pay to participate. So how do we explore that? And again, I'm not saying that you start, you're doing everything wrong because you might be one of the districts that's really kind of eliminated that barrier of participation.
I think that actual athletic barrier, we actually ended that recently.
Yeah, yeah. So again, that's a move towards equity. Because that's a structural barrier. We know that some students will do well in their academic learning because they're engaged in extracurricular activities, that they feel like they're a part of the school. They have something to contribute, they're a value. They have a good relationship with their peers. That actually impacts their academic performance. Some students, if they have art and music, and they do well in art and music, that's going to actually impact their learning in math. And so again, what are these structures? What do you get to look at? Now, some of this, as a school board, you're not going to be engaged in all of this. Some of this, you're going to say, well, this is our lens, these are our expectations, we're going to support this, these are the priorities, and you're going to hand it off to the leaders and they're going to be, you know, getting down in the weeds, you know, to look at, you know, the institutionalized factors. And then the professional, there's not much of a difference between institutional and professional. I'll go to the next slide. They've identified three big areas of questions. And so they, in every building in Montgomery County, and ranging from each building all the way up to the district office to the school board, these are the questions that they're asking. How does the workplace create conditions to ensure that success, engagement and inclusion are not predictable by race, ethnicity and culture? Their biggest gaps in Montgomery County, their first biggest achievement gaps were around race and ethnicity. The second biggest gaps were around social class, SES, and poverty. And so that's what their data said. We have to really eliminate those gaps that have been historically predictable by race, ethnicity and culture. That's why this is, this might be accurate for many districts, but this is where you get to own it. So these are their questions. I'm not saying these are your questions. Practice. How does the district identify specific strategies, actions or goals that are designed to eliminate the racial achievement gap? So taking a look at your, and let me just look at the, so I have the right language, the strategic goals with performance indicators. These are right on. When you start looking at practice, then you're also looking at disaggregating that data. And saying which groups are, let's just use attendance. Are there some groups of students, not just individuals, so this is the, you know, the tension, individuals and groups. Are there some groups who have low attendance? And you might be able to say, it's the Title I students, it's the poverty students, it's the students, you know, who are homeless, it's the students who are homeless, it's the students with high mobility. So when you start to look at certain gaps, then you start coming up with some new practices. How do we reduce barriers? My friend Scott Perry, who was the superintendent for, was a deputy superintendent in Albany and then the superintendent for the Southern Oregon ESD, he developed this whole attendance initiative that a lot of school districts are adopting, but it starts with, let's look at the data. Let's look at who's not attending. Let's look at tardies. Let's look at our system of reminding students. Let's look at access related to transportation. Let's look at what are the real barriers that are there for students? And I'm connecting attendance now with tardies. And I work with a lot of schools on tardies. And not only at the school level, but in the classroom level. And I'll share with you one practice. So worked with this high school in the Portland School District. And they tried three, four or five different things around students coming late to class because it was a big problem. I'll even say Roosevelt High School at the time, really big problem. Because they, every teacher would have, you know, two, five, seven students coming late, anywhere from one minute to 10 minutes late to class. And so they tried this, they tried that, they tried closing the door, they tried all sorts of things. And then they were kind of at their last straw and I just said, well, let's just think outside of the box. Let's just try something completely different. When the student arrives late, welcome them. Tell them that they were missed and you're so glad that they're there. Nothing else. Did that for two weeks. And the tardies in class went down by 50% within three weeks. So I'm not saying, and I didn't figure that out myself, I got it from somebody else. But we're looking at practices. We have to think outside the box. We have to be creative. Who are the students who are coming late? What's going on? Who are the students who aren't making it to school? Are they behind in credits? Have they given up? Are they bullied? We have a lot of students who don't come to school because they're bullied at school or they don't feel like they belong or they don't think they're smart. We have to know what's going on. So that's looking at practice. Leadership. I've been a part of the Oregon Leadership Network for years. And so how do we develop strong leaders for equity? And when I say leaders for equity, I'm thinking of board members, I'm thinking of district leaders, I'm thinking of principals, I'm thinking of parent leaders, I'm thinking of teacher leaders. How do we really help people and support them to really embrace that they are leaders? That they make a difference, not just in their own practice, but in collaborating with others? That they can try some new things, that they can make a difference, that they have efficacy, gets that collective efficacy. Leadership development is a big part of equity work. That's why a lot of schools, like you've begun, a lot of schools and school districts will have an equity team. And when I work with an equity team, often the whole first year is devoted to their learning and their growth as leaders before they start moving towards implementing change in practice. But leadership development is very important. I'm just going to pause there. Thoughts, reflections, questions? I've been doing too much talking for 15 minutes.
I would say that your last comment about the idea of an equity team and focusing on the growth, the team's growth as leaders, that fits with what I heard at the OSBA convention in Portland. The district that's near you changed that.
Bethel?
Yes. So I went to a presentation about equity from the Bethel School District and they called it hearts and minds work. Like that, this equity work can't exactly be top-down because that doesn't exactly work. And so that fits, that just fits with that, that their experience is that they really had to grow the leaders in the beginning of the process.
I agree with that, Anne. I actually think it needs to kind of come from both levels. Top-level support.
Yes.
But grassroots, you know, classroom-focused work. And both levels are crucial. And then the key, in all of my experience, the one position that seems to have the greatest impact is actually the building principal. So the influence at all levels, and if you have a building principal who's not doing it, who doesn't care about it, if you have strong teacher leaders, you can still make it happen. But the role of the building principal is very important. So how do we, now I'm, I've only been with you now for an hour and a half, but I'm already thinking "we." So how do we slash you help those building principals develop stronger equity muscle? That's the other part of this work, is that there are 101 things that are important to do and you can't do them all. And I think the three people sitting in those chairs, and Debbie included, know that it's about priorities. And with Oregon Leadership Network, we developed a whole equity leadership tool called the LEAD Tool. And we started using this concept, what are those high-leverage priorities? So if you focus on this, you're going to get tremendous results. Maybe a huge change in culture, huge change in beliefs and expectations. And in some schools, a high-leverage priority might be around partnering with families, family engagement. In some schools, if we, if the high-leverage priority is around school culture and discipline, in order to get some different results there, it requires completely new thinking. So in some schools, that's the high leverage. And Tiger Tualington, their high-leverage priority for years was reading. Ensuring that every student is not only a successful reader, but someone who enjoys reading and looks forward to reading. And so they made that one of their high-leverage priorities. Nancy Bolden, former state superintendent, and I worked closely with her for years and years, both at Springfield and University of Oregon, for her, that was always a high-leverage priority. But again, that leadership role is you can't do everything, so what's most important? And how, and this gets back to Pedro McGarry again, I'm going to quote him a lot, he's one of my favorite people. But he says we have to change three things in our schools. We have to change the discourse. So what we talk about and how we talk about learning. Says we need to change our practices. And we need to change, ultimately, we need to change the culture of our schools. So students feel like they belong, teachers feel creative, families, you know, feel welcome and engaged. This is the other really challenging thing, because it's another part, it's another piece of my work, is that when you have a teaching staff that's in conflict with each other and they don't like their leader and they're very dysfunctional and they're doing their own thing and, you know, a lot of schools will have a period like that. And some, it will be the whole history of the school, that's very dysfunctional, the culture's very negative. You can't do equity work unless you do the work of healing and bringing the staff together, building some trust, working on relationships. I've had the experience too many times, I'm doing this less and less, of coming in as a consultant or a professional development person to work with the staff on equity, but they don't have enough trust to go there. They can't even have the conversations because the teachers don't feel safe or they're not willing. Or somebody who's not on board with equity won't even express their resistance for fear of being labeled a racist. I'm just putting it in the most crude of terms. How do you build a culture where the staff feel like, you know, they can actually talk about this? How can you, as a school board, disagree with each other and talk about it and surface different perspectives and come together and say, okay, this is where we're headed? A group of teachers and teaching assistants need to do the same thing. Another leadership piece, and I'm going to highlight this one and then pause there for a moment, just so you can think on this one, because this is very difficult to do. Easy for me to say, and I'm looking at the three leaders right here, and in particular Anne, this is very easy for me to say, but hard to do. In a lot of our schools, when we do professional development and we have the meetings, mostly the certified staff attend. And the classified staff, for a number of reasons, are not able to engage. Some of it has to do with hourly wages, some of it has to do with time and assignments. And so now we've got the certified staff, but the educational assistants, the classified staff, who are often the closest to the students, but often reflect the same diversity of the students, they're not being trained as leaders. They're not getting the same support. So that's a structural issue. So how do we do, easy for me to say, no, no, go ahead and change that.
A throw-in.
Yeah. Well, and actually, you know, it's an interesting point that you bring up because I, and this is a good example for that. That's a practice that I think we do very well in our school districts. And I, I receive pushback every once in a while, and I'm certain you do as well, and I know board members do too, is that, is that there is plenty of opportunity to find circumstances that are not equitable in our school. No question about it. However, there are people, and it catches my attention sometimes as well, when phrases like required interruption is used at a time when, to quote our own board chair, "We have lots of examples to demonstrate that we have some good things going on." Doesn't minimize the fact we have some things that we have, we have a lot of work to do. And I, and maybe I'm a glass half-full, too much of a guy, but I think it's also important to recognize that as we have this conversation, to not make any assumptions that everything is broken, right? That there are some fundamental, very effective practices going on in this school district, and probably all 197 in Oregon. But it's similarly, we won't say equally, but similarly important to recognize the good, related to equity as well.
Yeah, and I might be giving the impression that we need to focus on the system that's broken. And my intent is to say it's structured, historically structured in a way to get these outcomes. And there's some really good things going on. And how do you get better at it? And how do you get better at it with each and every student?
When you can identify specific, specific things that are happening in your district that are addressing equity, it will help give a better understanding to not only, you know, board members, staff, everybody, the families in the district, to recognize, oh, that's what that is. So it might be a good idea to, you know, come up with those specifics and of what we're doing in our district. And that will help start the conversation when a parent comes up to me or anybody to help explain it and help them understand it. So, and then they can go back to their school and say, oh, that's what we're doing. Okay, so that's a proactive, positive thing that we could do in our district to start.
I have strong agreement. So when I'm talking about high-leverage, you know, practices.
Right.
It's not always addressing where you see the biggest gap.
Right.
Sometimes a high-leverage practice is getting even better than some of the things that you're already doing, that's part of your culture. We're talking about building on the cultural assets of students. We need to build on the cultural assets of schools, cultural assets of teachers. When teachers feel like they have something really creative that they're doing and it's supported by the school and by the district and it's in alignment with the equity work, there's excitement there. As opposed to, well, this is what we want everybody to do and, you know, you haven't been doing that very well, so just get better.
Well, and it might be easier to identify some of the things that we need to work on as well.
It's the yes and.
So it's small steps, you know, small steps to recognizing and learning and have a consistent discussion.
This is where I appreciate what you said, Anne, what you said as well. So there's the agree and a little bit of pushback. And it's not me pushing back, but it's, there are some things that you may not have focused on that are producing inequitable outcomes. Those are the ones that you need to do eyes on. And then there are some things that you're already doing that you want to get better at and you actually want to articulate. And you want the board to understand those and you want the board to support those and you want the message to the community and to the parents, this is what we're doing and why. Because you will have a school board meeting. Because you don't have abundance of resources. You will have a school board meeting where you're going to make some tough choices or the district is going to make some tough choices. You're going to say yes to this program and no to that program. You want to be able to support that, not only from your strategic goals, but also from an You want to be able to support that, not only from your strategic goals, but also from an equity lens. Because at some point, you're going to prioritize a program that's going to address the needs of those who've been underserved. And a more entitled group might feel like they're getting a budget cut. And that's, I can't remember, were you the one who read that quote? Ron? Or maybe it was Tom, but there's that.
Well, you take the box from the one guy and you slide it over to the other guy.
Yeah, and so you would be in a place where some parents might say, "Well, why are we spending this money on English language learners?" Because you might say, "That's a group that we need to provide more resources, more professional development. And why are we spending that money on them when my child, I want my child to be able to go to a really strong college?" And you're taking money away from them. You have to be able to have that discussion, because you will be in those tough choice places.
And both of those points of view are valid.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's the thing, right? It's not, and sadly, even though we can talk hypothetically about this, at the end of the day, there is sometimes sum zero sum involved, and there are limited resources.
Yeah, there are moments, and Jennifer, you have something to say.
Yeah, well, you've talked about, we've talked about this idea of new eyes, and we don't have to agree, but we need to have the discussion. And to me, that's pointing to a lens, an equity lens. And I don't exactly know what an equity lens is, but it seems to me like a series of questions or a way of looking at decisions that are made. I don't know, Andy put in front of us a policy that a team created last fall, and we weren't ready. Ron suggested at one point that we talk about, you know, including equity in the strategic plan. Do you remember that?
Did I want to misquote you?
It's like, where do we want to go, I guess, with this is my question, and I don't know how we process that. But that's the question that's on my mind right now.
So some districts and organizations really value having an equity lens that includes those seven to 12 questions that they ask around any decision that they're making, or a resource allocation. I worked with the Salem Kaiser district a year ago to adopt that with the school board. So the school board has an equity lens that they adopted. They didn't just find one from somebody else, they kind of adopted their own lens with their own questions. The Oregon Education Investment Board, that no longer exists, but they developed this equity lens that many of us look at. And they have, and I think it's in the handouts, so I'll pass those around in a few minutes. So that might be that. Some school boards adopt an equity policy. So I worked closely with North Plaquimus to develop their equity policy. I worked with Peggy Holstead at OSBA to kind of come up with the model policy for OSBA. What's most important is to adopt something, and it might be the strategic plan, that you believe in, that you're actually going to use.
Well, and to me, you know, you talked about the high leverage priorities. We have attendance is an issue, it's in our strategic plan. It's difficult to make a ton of headway on that. I mean, we haven't been like, "Yeah, we've got solutions for this." And it seems like that would naturally kind of be a place where we could apply some kind of equity, something to. But that's just one idea.
Well, an equity lens typically has certain questions. That when you answer those questions, it allows you to move forward and maybe have a breakthrough. So like around attendance, one of the questions would be, who, which stakeholders have been involved in the planning or decision-making? So are students and families who are low attending, are they involved? Do we know what their stories are? So it's a stakeholder question. Another equity lens question is often about unintended impact. How might certain students be impacted, especially those who are most vulnerable? Those who are low attending, those who are rural, again, I don't know your data, so I don't know if it's rural students, I don't know if it's Latino students, I don't, I don't know your data. But, you know, who are the most vulnerable students? How will they be impacted by any decision that's made? Often, there's a question around resource allocation, which equity lens moves you to allocate resources for those with the greatest need. So is that something that you're looking at? If attendance is a real priority, and you see that there's a correlation between low attending students and low performance and dropping out and being disengaged, and that's kind of your high leverage, then an equity lens might say, "We needed to devote more resources there." So it might be at the middle school that you have an outreach specialist who's focused on attendance and parent engagement. You allocate resource, I'm not saying do this, I'm just, these are just examples. You might have that person as a specialist, and you might cut teaching assistant, a teaching assistant. Or you might increase class size. These are the tough choices, you know. So again, if something emerges as a priority, then the equity lens also says what resources are necessary in order to fulfill the goals of that priority. So again, equity lens is really valuable if these are questions that you use. Our good friends in the Salem Kaiser School District just made a temporary decision, and they didn't use the equity lens, and they got great criticism from the community. And so it's not that, if you're going to adopt an equity lens as a school board, then you actually want to use it. If you're going to adopt a policy at the school board level, then you want that to guide the work of the district. And then the district leaders are going to be referencing that policy as they do their work.
Well, before any of that happens, I would say we should probably agree on the definition of equity.
Yeah.
And that's something that can come from the top, I think.
Yeah. So like, let's go ahead and pass out the handouts now, and we'll look at some of these different tools. Do we need to take a stretch break?
Yeah.
Bathroom break?
Yeah. That's okay with you talking?
Yeah.
Five minutes. Even break. Bring us over.
All right. So the OEIB equity lens, they have a preamble, and then they, it's actually about a four-page document. But I just kind of cut out the preamble and then those questions, the key questions, because I wanted to get at the questions. But they have some strong language in there, because they, their vision is about equity and excellence for each and every child and learner. So again, as you're looking at these, you might be highlighting some phrases from the definitions and from each piece that you think might want to show up in terms of your board definition for equity, whether you get there tonight or later. But it's about ensuring sufficient resource, that's a big part of the OEIB equity lens. A lot of it is around resources, because they're looking at it from a state level, and resource allocation. The other thing that they have in their preamble is they say, "The attainment of a quality education strengthens all Oregon communities and promotes prosperity to the benefit of us all."
Who gets to define quality?
At this point, the OEIB was defining quality and all, but if you were to adopt this, then you would be defining quality. Because all of these are words that only have meaning if you know what they mean, and if you agree on what they mean, and then the district can move forward with the definitions. But they do have this notion that equity actually benefits all. So even those students who might have resources taken away from them to be in community, you know, really healthy community with other students and other families, it actually benefits the whole Silverton community. We have less students being pushed out or dropping out, we have reduction in juvenile crime. So it's kind of, everybody benefits as a result of equity. That's the Pollyanna approach, and it's mostly true, and then there are the hard choices, where you have to, we're going to fund this and not that. But the questions were what I wanted you to really look at. Who are the racial, ethnic, and underserved groups affected? What is the potential impact of the resource allocation? Does the decision made ignore, which is one of the bigger ones, does it ignore disparities or worsen existing disparities? How does the investment advance, in this case, the state goals? But you might be asking, how does this decision advance the strategic goals of the school district? What are the barriers? Number five, which is what we were just talking about, have you intentionally involved stakeholders who are also members of the communities affected by the investment or resource allocation? And then how will you modify, how will you collect data, how does this advance the commitment? These are just examples. So nationally, people are referencing the OEIB equity lens. Multnomah County also has an equity and empowerment lens that groups from all over the nation are accessing. And the city of Seattle also has a very strong equity lens. And again, so when you look at someone else's work, that's just to stimulate you. And then you think, now, what has meaning for us? What will guide our work? What are the key questions that we want to ask, you know, within the Silver Falls School District? And some of these will likely show up. The ones that show up in almost every equity lens are the questions about, you know, who's impacted? What are the disparities or worsen? Who are the stakeholders? Who's involved in the decision? Those are some of the key questions that you may want to adopt. You may also want to adopt an equity policy, but ultimately, I'm going back to what one of you said, is if you can come up with a shared definition of equity, that will allow you to really move forward with this work. And it might not be something that you do collectively in a board session. You might actually ask one or two people, based on what we talked about today, you might ask one or two people to put together a draft and bring that back to another board meeting. And then you can discuss a draft. Right now, you know, there's so many different pieces, it's kind of hard to have five people, you know, wordsmith, a document. I'd also be happy to serve as a volunteer resource if you want to have one or two people put together a draft. If I highlight the volunteer part, I'm not trying to create more work for me. So that's important. If you go to the North Plaquimus School District, and I think it printed out in color? Did yours print out in color, the green? Look at the green. Well, it's printed out in green. Get there. So they have several tools on their website. What I liked about this tool, because it still, it gets back to the questions that you ask. So they've got, you know, why should students learn? It's about relevance, and so they've got big questions there. How do you teach? And they have several big questions there. What do you teach? This is where we kind of started years ago. So I'm old, I've been around for a long time. Before we talked about equity, we had a focus on cultural competency. And before cultural competency, we had a focus on diversity. And before diversity, we had a focus on multicultural education. So I'm just dating myself. But in multicultural, multicultural education, we talked a lot about the what? Whose stories are we teaching? Which novels are we reading? Which histories are we sharing? So kind of the multicultural teaching was focusing on the textbooks and the content. But it's still important. So what do we teach? Is it relevant? Is it meaningful? Does it get us closer to our goals for each student and their growth and learning? Does it, you know, does it reflect our core values, you know, as a district? And does every student see themselves in the content? You know, it's so important. So North Plaquimus asks those questions. What perspectives are validated in the materials that you use? And if you look at your materials and you start to think, "Well, it seems like there's more of a white middle-class highlight here." Maybe we need to highlight, you know, the experiences and the attributes and assets of generational poverty. And what it's like to be in a community. And that maybe being poor, you can be really happy and be poor. You don't have to be rich in order to be happy. I mean, I'm just raising questions, just looking at it through a poverty lens. When do students learn? How do we structure the day? How do we start to remember that our high school students really, most of them are not at the optimum for learning until about 9:30 or 10:00 a.m.? So how do we structure the day like that? How do we welcome students when they come late? I mean, those sorts of things. Where are students learned? Look at the classrooms. With Hillsborough, we would have a whole walkthrough, we would visit every single classroom in the building, and we would look at, what's the learning environment look like? What's up on the board? Are students engaged? And who's talking and who's not? There's a strong correlation between student learning and student talking. When students are silent, they're generally not learning as much as when they're talking if it's related to the classroom. So where are the students learning? And who are you teaching? This goes back to each individual student, we need to know our students. Some of our districts and schools have adopted culturally responsive teaching as their equity priority. So in fact, I was just, I was in a planning meeting, I was on the phone this afternoon in a planning meeting with the school, and they wanted to move towards culturally responsive teaching, and we need to know who our students are. And I actually pulled them back just a moment, and I said, "Yes, that's where you need to go, but you actually have to start with, who are we as the teachers? What are our cultural beliefs, our assets, our lens, our values, and maybe even our biases?" How can each teacher? Because Geneva Gay, who writes a lot about culturally responsive teaching, says that teachers actually, without knowing it, every day are teaching their own culture.
Of course.
We're teaching who we are at the same time that we're teaching content. And many of us are teaching in the same way that we were taught. You know, in terms of how we structure and what's relevant and questions that we ask. And so these are great equity lens questions, they just divided them up into those kind of the newspaper approach, who, what, when, how, where sort of thing. But I wanted you to have that, you know, just as a reference. Not that you need to model yourself after, you know, North Plaquimus, or not that you need to adopt all the questions from the OEIB equity lens. But it's really moving now towards where are you in this work? How do you want to define equity? How might equity show up in your strategic goals with performance indicators? So I just have the one page off the website. So I'm naive and ignorant, so grant me that. A little naive, a little ignorant around what you're doing in the district. But you can look at every single performance indicator through an equity lens, and have some subset questions under each indicator. And I'm not saying that you, as a school board, need to do this. This is more the work for the district leaders. But an equity lens allows you to ask different questions. Often, we'll have you start collecting some slightly different data, and not just objective data. Several of the schools that I work with, they've made their equity priority student voice. They want to hear the student experience. What's meaningful? How are they engaged? What approaches work for them? How have they been harmed? You know, who values them? Who's silenced them? What are they excited about? What are their hopes? What are their dreams? What are their learning styles? And it's not just once a year, but if we have ways to access student voice, and the teachers learn how to hear their voices and then use that to build a bridge. Because Geneva Gay talks about teachers are bridge builders between the culture of the students and the learning. Sometimes the culture of the student and the culture of the teacher. Or the culture of this group of students and this group of students. So teachers as bridge builders. So we need to know who our students are. We need to know not just, you know, we need to know more than, are you Latino? Or are you African? African-American or are you first-generation immigrant? We need to know about who do they listen to?
Right.
And what social media are they accessing? These are questions I would never have asked 30 years ago. But who are they listening to? What are they talking about? What games are they playing? How can we build a bridge? That's part of being culturally responsive. And then what are their family values? What are your family's hopes for you? And how do we honor and build on that? And it is back to the social emotional learning.
Psychological tool.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If we know them, if we know who they're hanging out with, if we know what they're feeling, if we know what makes them feel valued, how belonging is important to them, if we know what's troubling them, if we know what the traumas that they're experiencing. And some of those traumas are, and I'm going to go with undocumented students and families, some of those traumas are not about school, they're about the outside world that are actually impacting who they are and their hopes and their sense of security. If they're not feeling safe, if they're worried about their parents, if they're watching TV and they're getting this message that they're not valued. I'm just using that as an example, because all is, this is where we start to look like what groups of students are not doing well, and then what we know about what their experience is, so that we can help each individual student. So I wanted you to have tools. I wanted you to be exposed to what others are doing, and I wanted to take this kind of time for you to be thinking about, and you're already doing this, is what's your next move as a school board? I strongly support your coming up with your own definition of equity. That's something that's doable. I think it's foundational. You're asking for that, it's necessary. And again, I would suggest that you have one or two people work on that, based on, and you will have another brainstorm about the most important pieces. And then I would be happy to just be a resource to help, just with the wordsmithing on that. Maybe somebody from the district office too. But then where are you going with this? This is kind of, it's important to know your why. But then what's your role?
Right.
What do you want to own as a school board? And I'm going to pause there. This is your discussion, I will be a resource for you.
Wow, just so much information to process. How do you recommend that the school district, starting from, and looking at data, looking at the things you look at, how do you evaluate from an outsider and say, you've got a problem with equity in these four or five places, or these two? How do you, how do we know what the level of our problem is? Is there a sense of that you can give us?
Oh, yeah. I mean, so first off, every district and every school has equity issues.
Yes.
And challenges and gaps and disparities. Some are bigger than others. So I'm working with one school district, they're really devoting a lot of time to equity, and their disparities are pretty slight compared to other districts, but they're still working on them. So when you're looking at your own data, and this might be the district leaders, and might be bringing this back, and they've already done some of this work. The biggest disparities might be in attendance. And it might not, and I'm not just talking about that you have general low attendance, but equity is looking at the subgroups or the different groups. So who are the students that are low attending?
So start looking at, look at the subgroups.
Yes. I think it's important to look at some.
Okay, yeah, we do.
When you're looking at, look at your test scores.
Oh, yeah, I love the data, yeah.
Look at your ninth-grade students who are on track to graduate, or your 10th-grade students who are behind credits. Look at, I think it's always important to look at your discipline data, very revealing. So if you look, not just the expulsions, but the expulsions, the suspensions, and the referrals. So who's being referred more than others? And typically, this is predictable, and I'm just going to use it because it's easy to talk about. Typically, your male students are going to be referred, suspended, and expelled more than your female students. In most of our school districts in Oregon, it was predictable that African-American and Latino and Native American students would be referred, suspended, and expelled more than their white counterparts. But what do your data tell you? So if you don't have disparities in discipline, you say, well, we need to suspend fewer students, and we need to reduce our referrals, that's a general initiative. It might not be your high-leverage equity initiative. But if you've got disparities there, then that could be an equity initiative. So some of our school districts who adopt a policy will have, in their policy, this whole notion of data collection and highlighting disparities and closing gaps in disparities, that becomes the policy. So the school board sends the directives to the superintendent that we want to close disparities and promote equitable outcomes. And then the superintendent and the leadership team and the schools will then kind of look at the data and highlight where are the greatest disparities? And also highlight what are we doing well, so that we continue to do well? That's the two things. But the school board role is one of saying, we want you to look at the data. We want you to look at the gaps and the disparities. We want to be informed. That was the big thing, I'll just use St. Louis Kaiser, because they're your neighbor, is the school board said, we want to be informed, we want to have reports, we want to look at the test scores, we want to see how we're doing. Because they have many years where they're, for English language learners, that the gaps were not improving. And the board was saying, every year you show us the data, and every year we're having big gaps, so what's, and the board was saying, what's their responsibility around that? And some might say, well, it's really hard to close those gaps for emerging bilingual students or English language learners. And it is. Can I just, I'll just go into the story on this one. Twenty-five years ago, when I was at the Oregon Department of Education, we brought together a group of the district leaders and trainers for bilingual students and English language learners. We brought together 25 of the strongest leaders in the state, and we did a whole one-week institute, kind of a training of trainers. And at the beginning of the institute, almost every single leader said, it's unfair to expect English language learners to achieve at the same level in all these classes in English at the same time that their English skills are limited, and they're learning English, and we still expect them to grow and achieve equally with their English counterparts in math and chemistry and English and social studies. And these were the teachers who were, and leaders and district leaders who were really on board. And the reason they said it was unfair is they'd never seen it. And then, like 10 years later, after some schools and districts really invested, and they started to see that English language learners could actually achieve in the content areas, they could see it, and now they expect it. So some school districts might be looking at those gaps. But again, I don't know your data well enough. But your role as a school board often is, and my directive to you, is that you want to know where are the gaps? And then you want your school district leaders to say, these are the gaps, these are the priorities. And then you want to say, yes, go close those gaps, and what can we do to help? I'm being a little naive, but that's mostly your role.
Right. Well, you're talking about data and subgroups. Now, we get a whole bunch of data and subgroups on our state, on our report card.
Yes.
But what data might we need to be looking for that isn't on there? Discipline rates, are those on there?
Suspensions and expulsions are, referrals aren't.
Okay.
Attendance isn't always disaggregated.
So where are we measuring that? I do like to look at that. I do enjoy that.
It's important, and extra engagement and extracurricular activities is important. Family engagement, that's more qualitative data than it is quantitative data, but that's also important source of data. Because, and I'm going to, because I do a lot of work with schools around the engagement of Latino families, because that has emerged as a priority for many of the schools, is the way you outreach and connect with Latino families is often quite different than you would outreach and connect with middle-class white families. The way you outreach and connect with rural families might be quite different than the way you outreach and connect with families within town. And so that's the differentiation. So if that, again, that could be a priority. But the hard thing, and I'm kind of looking at the three of you right here, the hard thing at the district level is you can't prioritize everything. One year, when I was at the Oregon Department of Education, and this is like 15 years ago, we had this whole review of who we are and what are our priorities, and I was on the committee that was looking at equity and cultural competency, fancy that, it's a big surprise. So I'm on that group, and it emerges as one of the priorities for the Oregon Department of Education for the first time ever. We had 18 priorities, that one was number 17. Nothing happened. And when you're number 17 on the list of priorities, ain't much going to happen. But if you're three, four, or five, or one or two, then that becomes a highlight. And as a board, you can say, we believe in equity, this is how we define it, these are some key questions that we're going to be asking and making decisions, and we want to support the district leaders in these priorities.
You know, Tom, if I may share, I think maybe one of the strategies I would like to see implemented is, you always defer to boots on the rack, right? So for example, Jennifer, you're a friendly instructor, so if I was in your district, I would say, I would like to hear from you, what you see on a daily basis, because you are in the trenches. And then I would hear from the department heads.
Yes.
And so we can, she has, we've got this amazing data, real-time data, exactly what's going on, and at least that would give us maybe an idea or direction on what we could focus on.
Right.
But I think that would be important, in addition to the data that we have.
Right. And I ask that question, because I don't like to ask more work. I mean, when it comes to data, we have, there's a lot of data on that state report card.
Right.
But as far as student-parent engagement, things like that, that's something that's harder to measure. But I do recall an exercise that DeAndi related, shared with us at the high school, where you put all the students named, faces up on the board, and you give all the staff members some stickers, and they walk through and put like their five stickers on the students they knew. And they all caught, and they all grouped on certain stickers, and you all went, look, look at the kids who don't have a connection.
There's 400 kids that nobody knew.
Right. And you shifted that around?
Yeah.
And you shifted that around?
Yeah.
And?
That's an equity activity.
Yeah.
Because you're focusing on every child.
Yeah.
And then strategies could relate to groups that you see emerging.
Or patterns, or what?
Well, one thing that I was thinking about, when we're looking at our vision statement, and we're talking about graduating 100% of our students to improve the world, I think we have a pretty good handle on graduating kids that can, that have college credit, they're moving on to college. But for me, my wonder is, for those kids a year out, a year after, what are they now wishing that they would have done in high school, if they could have had access to high school? We took the industry tour a couple of weeks ago, and I think that there has been such a push on everyone's going to college, that we're missing the boat on some things for kids. And I feel like that would help with parent engagement, because now you've got older siblings or friends whose children actually want to break to work, who's making $50,000 a year. And they start that dialogue in the community of, it's not just college.
So that's a shift.
Yeah.
That can be an equity shift. And this one's complex. Because for years, we used to track kids, you're going to college, you're not. So now, how do we provide multiple pathways for growth and success, knowing that some kids are going to go to college and some aren't? But it's a choice. It's about interests and needs and all kinds of things. And we also have the experience of a lot of kids going to college and leaving after the first year and being $5,000 to $10,000 in debt.
And no plan B. Because nobody talked to them about.
Yeah. And I, because I used to work with the GEAR Up program through Oregon University System. Huge, huge issue. So from an equity lens, it's like, who are our students? What are those pathways? Who's on track? How are they supported? How are they validated? Because a lot of kids will say they're going to college, just because that's what everybody wants to hear. So how do you change that culture? And some kids who might drop out, might stay in school, if you have some meaningful engagement for them that's more around career readiness. Might be, might be you do some more internships. I mean, again, I'm not the expert in that, but the equity lens allows you to ask the question.
I think it adjusts your curriculum, like if you have this group of students that you receive feedback, and this is something that we try to do at the high schools, like not once during the industry tour last week, did I hear anybody say, we really want kids to be able to analyze Shakespeare in literary analysis? No one said that. And so perhaps it's time to stop talking about, wouldn't it be nice to have language arts in a business study, or math in a business study? And let's do it. Why are we not doing it?
Yeah. Love it, because I'm often reluctant to say that, because I don't want to be blasphemous with Shakespeare.
I love Shakespeare, we're interested.
But we ask different questions.
Yes.
And what's, and it's one of these questions around the what? What's relevant? What's meaningful? And we also tend to really be suspicious about social media, as if it's a bad thing, and I really don't like it, I try to stay off it. But our young people are on social media. How do we connect that with their lifelong learning, with careers, and even with, I know some brilliant English teachers who connect social media with Shakespeare. I have to say, my mother was, she taught Shakespeare, and I would listen to tapes of Julius Caesar over and over again. So it's not my favorite, but I have been to Ashland.
So the data that you brought up about equity, about discipline, about boys having more disciplinary directions than girls, to me, like this is a fundamental belief of mine, that our school's structure is more suited for girls than it is for boys. And I would like to fundamentally change that. That's not something that's going to happen in this discussion necessarily. And so I guess that's like, what's the scope here? And like, how can we, how can we move forward in chunks? And I, again, my bias is probably towards focusing on strategic vision and statement, because it's something we should already be doing. I feel like everything that we do, if we're going to make a movement, should probably be pointed in that direction. And I'm more interested, I suppose, in smaller chunks, but I think we probably have to get the overall umbrella before we do that.
Part of that is timing, too. A lot of school boards and districts, every four or five years, will take another look at vision and mission, and how do you now embed equity into that process?
Well, our retool of the strategic plan is coming up shortly, so.
Good timing.
Right.
If I can chime in there, just as reminders to all of you, I mean, in late September, you're going to be hearing from our consultant, who will be leading you through that process. But with that, we've already got it on the calendar, middle of October, you have two full days, I should say, we have two full days committed to, and this will be new to you, committed to public input using both focus groups and general community forums to help all this, to do just this. And I think it's going to be quite a telling, quite a telling opportunity for you, at least it was four and a half, a year, four years ago, when we went through it at that time. But I'm really pleased to hear some of the, I think, some of the timing around the strategic plan and our discussions on equity, your discussion, and you reaching some sort of agreement on what the definition of equity is. And this is just a suggestion, Jennifer, based upon your question, is that I think there may be some sort of helpful results by having some sort of secured or at least clear direction about what this board believes to be a definition of equity as you move into this plan.
That's kind of what I'm wondering, because you can have a visioning plan, and we can have an equity lens, and we got two different things, or maybe we can just combine the other and have one. And it sounds like we're doing a lot of good things already, but as we do it again, tweak it, because I don't, I don't want to it, because I don't, I don't want to have, you want to have, you want to have the two policies you have, but you want them to be good ones. You don't want to have, just like you were saying, goals. You don't want to have 18 goals, because you want to have good ones. And so maybe, maybe my current thought now is to try to just roll in our equity statements into our next visioning plan or something, and try to really tweak them.
I want to respond to that.
Yes.
Tom, because this is also controversial.
Yes.
And the equity work. So there's pros and cons, so I'll share the two extremes. So when we embed equity into everything that we do, like in this strategic plan, that's where it lives, there's a chance that it will be watered down.
Right.
When we do a separate equity lens, there's a chance that it sits off to the side.
And doesn't get used, exactly. And that's...
And so how do you, how do you navigate that, being mindful of...
Right.
You want this to be real. You want this to actually be something that you own, that guides your work as a school board and will be helpful to the district and their equity work.
So if you, if, if a district was to adopt, were to adopt a lens, and then choose a priority, but you're still, still on the hook for using the lens, then we've talked about that with the Salem Kaiser example, it's like, we want to kind of tiptoe into the waters a little bit, because it could be overwhelming.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out how to balance.
I think it's, I think it would be okay and really work out well if you did adopt an equity lens, and you didn't fully live up to it in every medium. But it's aspirational, that it might take you some time to really have that become a part of your practice. So I wouldn't discourage you from adopting an equity lens, knowing that it's, it's a shift, and it's gonna take some time to make that part of your routine. I'm not saying adopt an equity lens, but I wouldn't discourage you from adopting an equity lens for that reason. I'm, earlier, some, I can't remember who said the beliefs, but a lot of districts and school boards have some beliefs that accompany their equity lens, or their equity policy. But you might have some equity beliefs that accompany your equity definition, just as your next step.
Okay.
And again, just based on what I'm hearing, that might be a really good next step. So OEID has like several paragraphs of their beliefs. Oregon School Boards Association started out with some beliefs and then, you know, some points. And so that, that might, again, if you have one or two people who want to help, you know, craft something as a draft, your equity definition could also have the four or five foundational beliefs, you know, that would also guide your work. It's not a policy, it's not a lens, but it gives you something that's really tangible. I'm just trying to kind of come together with what I'm hearing, that would, that would be helpful for you, trying to get some next steps.
Yeah. I think it's important that we don't set ourselves up for failure.
Yep.
Yeah, don't move too quickly.
Well, you know, looking at this equity lens from OEID, there's not one thing on here that we shouldn't be doing anytime we make any decision anyway, right? It doesn't, I mean, is there anything on here that shouldn't be in the back of our minds if we're discussing just about anything?
Looking at the questions, I would agree, I think maybe the, you know, Andy's comment about cultures, I like underserved groups, I like that wording, because there can be a lot of different underserved groups that you can't just point to and ignore.
Right. I underlined it, and my question was, well then, what defines being underserved?
Well, then we have to.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but I agree with you, I like it. I very much dislike the constant bucketing of racial and ethnic groups, personally, that's just my own opinion. I don't like the fact that we have created such an identity politic world that we live in, right? So, having said that, I get that there are practical realities that have to be taken into account there as well. And I like the, the idea that, that we talk more about underserved groups, I agree with you.
Yeah, and I think that, I do think that the, I'd agree, I have the racial, the word race is socially constructed. It's all socially constructed, and I sometimes don't like to perpetuate that, but I'm not sure that I fully understand all the implications. But I think using the term race gets people thinking in one direction, and we might want to think in many other directions.
Right.
So anyway, and maybe I'm, there's probably other points of view, and so I am open to other points of view as well. Shelley, we haven't heard anything from her.
Yeah, be right. Taking it all in. Well, if specifically, if we're talking about, you know, the number one here, you know, when I highlighted racial, ethnic, and underserved groups affected, but the underserved groups, I put an arrow up and I, you know, I put socioeconomic, and then I was like, well, I could put 10 more here.
Right.
So I, and I didn't, because I was listening, but I like, I like having, at this point, when we're just beginning, our understanding of what equity means, or trying to put together the language, not being too specific at this point. I think that we need to allow our administration to, you know, look at data, and I think that having it pretty broad at this point, I think is a good thing. It's not gonna set us up to fail, like Ron mentioned, and, because we're not focusing on one specific thing at this point. But I think as we work together to look at data, you know, the report card and the specific things, that might help us determine more specificities in the future, the near future, I suppose. But I really think that we need to get a definition. I mean, we have to agree on what a definition is for us to move forward to, you know, implement some questions.
Now, are you, are you thinking about maybe walking out of here tonight with a definition?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No. Yeah, that's a good question.
But a plan, perhaps. I like... To move forward.
Totally come to a decision.
Well, you're talking about a step-by-step plan, like, you know, we got point one, two, three, four, five, this is how we're gonna execute?
To get to a definition, at least, that would say.
I'm not sure if I'm brave for that. I would like to take the information that John, you presented tonight, the handouts, some of the stuff that I got from the OSBA, sit on that until our next meeting, and then come back a little more, after a chance to let this soak in and percolate, and do a little more research, for me personally, and then come back at it. Because I don't want to be too hasty, just to have a plan for the sake of having a plan, and let it be window dressing. I, I think this is extremely important, and I think we need to put a little more thought into it, just more than what we have tonight.
Well, that is a plan.
Well, that is, that is, that's a plan. That's another plan.
Well, I, one thing, I feel, it's important to say before the topic gets too far away, I think that, like, this number one in the OEID equity lens, I think it would, another thing to consider would be listing the racial and ethnic group, but a bunch of other things. That could be another approach to it as examples. But I do like the language farther down that talks about individual and cultural needs. Because again, the word individual seems to have come up. But anyway, we might, I'd be putting the cart before the horse, because we're kind of talking about process now, but I just wanted to add that forward.
Well, the idea that Ron mentioned is very reasonable, and I think it can be in conjunction with, you know, us trying to, in our own minds, trying to figure out a definition of equity after what we've learned. I have a much clearer understanding. I thought I knew what it was before, but there's some points that you made that I learned from, so that's a good thing.
My concern about not having any kind of plan meeting here is that we won't have any kind of time to dedicate to it in the future, because things are slower now than they will be in a hundred or so, and right now we have a little, a little bit more time to talk about it, dedicated time. So that's just a concern about not having that concrete plan. Couldn't we delegate making the plan to our executive? That, I don't know if that's...
Yeah, no, that's kind of, I'm listening and pondering. I guess between the seven of us, we, you know, first we gotta decide, do we have a problem? Do we need to change? Do we need to make a change? Or do we just leave things alone?
Oh.
I mean, that's, because that's kind of where I'm, that's kind of where I'm at, so that's why I was asking about the data. I, I, I love the data, I, when I get those, when I get those report cards, I pour into them, I look at them, I look at them, I look at them, I go, you know, we're doing pretty darn good here. Not that there isn't room for improvement, you know? And so I, I, there's always room for improvement, you know? And so I guess, you know, first, the board, you know, the seven of us have to decide, do we need to change our, do we need to change what we're currently doing? Which I think is doing pretty good, but maybe it could be better.
I don't think you change your work, or enhance?
There, okay, there you go. Yeah, yeah, there you go, okay. And that's why I kind of suggested, you know, is a possibility just to, you know, look at incorporating in our next strategic visioning plan go-around.
Like I said, it sort of puts clarity around stuff that I would argue anybody ought to be doing anyway, to a great extent.
Yeah, it's kind of like, well, it, it, it's like, it's what everybody ought to be doing and dug on it, that's what we are doing.
Right, but it would just, it would, all it would do is clarify. I'm interested, you know, initially, I think one of my questions was similar to yours, which is, is this a solution in search of a problem?
Yeah, there you go.
And you have to watch out for that, at least in my line of business, because we do it all the time, spend a lot of time and energy solving problems, and don't exist. And having said that, I totally agree with your point, there's always going to be equity challenges in every district, in every facet, frankly, of life, it's the human condition, right? So, the question then begs is, is it, does it warrant this level of investment? Does the, the return warrant this level of investment, right? I think the question could go either way in my mind still, but I'm certainly interested in proceeding.
Yeah.
I think the idea of having a conversation is important. And that, that this is the process of having the conversation, and so to me, that part is important.
Yes.
We don't have to agree, but we do need to have a conversation, is kind of, that was the, the quote, I'm quoting, maybe I misquoting, words may not. But to me, that makes sense, because decisions are gonna be tough, you know? And this is my, this is not the magic bullet for every decision, but it is a guide for discussion.
Can I, can I just offer a word on this? And again, this is...
You team is your floor.
It's who you are, and it's how you want to move forward, it's, you need to own who you are, and you do. I'm pushing back on, and again, I don't know your, your data as well, it's probably, I know it the least, so I can't speak with, with a lot of, you know, detail on that. But if there's the notion that we're doing pretty well, and we're focusing on all students, and we're doing pretty good, then you probably don't need, you know, to highlight and focus on equity. If you have a sense that there are certain groups and individuals who are underserved, and this is, been historical, it might be English learners, or it might be a random discipline, if you have a sense that there are those disparities and gaps, then it's really valuable to take on equity.
You're saying, what's, what's the problem we're trying to fix?
Right, yeah. My assumption, just because I work with so many districts in Oregon, almost every district has significant disparities. So my, I'm starting with the assumption that you two, you two have significant disparities that are really worth focusing on equity. That's my assumption.
Should we, would it be, should we look at our data, and then say, "Here are the problems," and then build, build a lens that will help us fix those problems? If we agree that there's, so is, is that an approach?
I would say you need to know your data. And in knowing your data, if you see that there are inequities and disparities, then really take ground on your equity work.
Should we start there? Is that, is that a good place to start with this nunnery, or...
Well, I don't know, because I don't know your data.
Right.
So if I knew your data, I would be saying, "Yes, there are significant disparities, and I really want to support you and encourage you to adopt an equity lens and a definition of equity." So I'm a little bit in the dark.
Our superintendent does.
Yeah, can I chime in?
Yeah, please do that, yeah.
And, and Daniel, Jennifer may have some thoughts as well. I was just over here thinking, as you were commenting, about the phrase, "How do we know?" Right? I mean, how do we know, meaning, how do we know what our, what our areas of our opportunity gaps are, what our gaps are?
Yes.
And how do we know where we're doing well? Well, I can tell you, we do evaluate data, principally evaluate data on the site level. I think we can do a more thorough and deeper job at the district level, no question about that, especially when it comes to subgroup performance and group, uh, groups of otherwise underserved students. But frankly, one of the answers to the question of how do we know is, I'm not entirely certain about who all our underserved populations are. And I think that's a real fair thing to say. And so I believe data is the, is one of the first steps that we need to do, and I'm gonna suggest that you charge your staff with that, and then we can report back to you. But second of all, and I think this is just as important, is that there are going to be board elections over the next four, six, eight years, you're going to see movement in administrative staff, and I think if you, as a school board, are truly a visionary group, and this, I believe this group is, then you're also going to tee it up, so to speak. And you're gonna tee it up for the next in-line to say, "This is a value for Silver Falls School District, not only enough that you place it in the form of a definition and beliefs," I kind of like that approach, "but it's also incorporated into your strategic plan." And then also, the only other thing that comes to mind is, I would encourage you to let time be on your side. I remember one of the, one of my takeaways from a couple of trainings I've been with you, John, is do something, right? But not necessarily with a specific timeframe around it. However, in your case, you have an interesting advantage with revisiting your strategic plan. You are on the cusp of making board goals for the year, which incorporate this into it, and I'd be glad, and I generally do, help you craft something, and just put it in front of you for your review and input. And then you could give yourself a couple of benchmarks along the way, so that by December, you want to have this in place, by March, you want to have this in place, and by June, you're evaluating how well you did. And I think when it comes to equity, that would be a reasonable conversation for you to have as a board, and to come up with that timeline, with some input from us, I can truly propose something to you.
Yeah, and so, and so the place to start would be to say, who are underserved groups?
Right.
Is that something we want to ask and invite to start our discussion?
I'm certainly open to that, we can...
That's one of the questions.
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, it's, to me...
Number one, who are the...
Well, it's, it's not a black and white issue, right? At this point, the statement remains, it's not black and white, it's fairly chiladness. And so we're embarking on this journey to look, to find out, what do we need to focus on? So, we don't have to pigeonhole this at this point, but we can definitely employ the administrative staff, and they then can take everyone that's underneath there, that moves on the ground again, and at least identify.
Yeah.
Because everyone's gonna see something a little bit different, and then we can start on this journey. And, and like Andy said, this board is not gonna remain constant. The, the way our district looks now, the way our student body looks now, may not be the same in ten years. So I think it's important, at least to, you know, open this up and begin the process. Like I said, it's not black and white, and I think it will set us up for success there.
Yeah.
Can you clarify something for me?
Yes.
I'm not sure, I can't remember. At the very beginning, when you started talking, you said that equity is not solely based on test scores, and you said it's, it's stories and what teachers see and all of that. So, that to me is, we shouldn't just focus on the data, right?
Not, not just, not just the quantitative data.
Okay.
But also the qualitative.
Yeah, okay.
So like, does a student feel like they belong?
Right.
Do they feel valued? Is their learning style really addressed? Is the, the culture at home reflected in the school and valued in what they're reading and learning? I mean, those are not test scores.
Right.
Test scores are also important, though.
Of course.
Because it is a marker of learning.
Right.
Unfortunately, it became kind of the sole marker of achievement and school success. It's still, it's still meaningful.
Right.
But it's not the end-all, the end-all.
A good one.
A good one is, a good way to measure the feeling of belonging is, is attendance.
This is one.
It, it's a way, it's, it's tough to measure, but if you don't, if you feel like you belong, you want to go to school, you show up on time.
There are other ways too, and this, I'm referring to, like your, your strategic processes, focus groups with students, surveys with students, attendance. All, all of those are ways to kind of get at the student perspective. And then when you disaggregate that, you might have eighty percent of your students who really love school. But of the twenty percent who don't love school, or don't feel like they belong and aren't thriving, maybe that's, you know, fifty percent of your Latino students.
Right.
Or underserved.
Or, or, or it could be the rural students. But that, that's where you're, you're starting to ask those questions. It's not enough to just say, well, seventy-five, eighty percent of our students really feel valued in school. Then you look at those twenty, twenty-five percent and see what do they have in common? And that allows you to kind of focus on, what do we need to do specifically for that underserved group? And, and I just threw out race ethnicity is just easy.
So we've got fifteen minutes left, and Shelley, both you and Jennifer, you did say something that's now starting to resonate with me, and as far as, maybe we can put together at least the next steps, right?
Something, I think we should have something.
Yeah, we've got fifteen minutes.
John?
Yeah, I'm up, I don't have an issue with creating a plan.
Just the next step.
It's not necessarily the plan, so, yeah.
Yeah, just what's the next step?
What's the next step and how do we employ our board chair?
Next step, start with, start with data. Who are the underserved groups, you know, have them, I mean, number one. I think that, that's the place to start.
Like as far as maybe step number one would be to now defer to...
Yes.
And do an effort, and to give them the margin orders to aggregate the data or collect it.
Right, right. Right, well, and then you go where the data tells you. I mean, that's kind of, I don't know what, I don't know what the step has after that until you look at the data, I can't. So I mean, I just, you go where the data tells you.
Instead of creating the data, we're going to objectively collect it, and that's going to at least help us get in the next direction. So, I mean, how many steps do we need?
And goes, and goes so well.
My question is, do you agree with what Andy suggested as far as, I mean, he mentioned strategic vision, he mentioned board goals, I mean, it sounds like he has an idea of where we can go with that. Are we okay with delegating that? And do we feel confident that he is reading us? I, I feel that we can do that.
I don't think I would. I think, I think the, you know, if you guys are going to go off and collect data, one of the things I would encourage is to really be outside the box on this too. Again, it's easy to categorize, you know, Latino and Anglo, and you know, you can bucket things that are on all the surveys or we have statistical demographic data for, but to look at things that maybe aren't as obvious. Jennifer said something earlier that resonated with me. I was at, I was at the awards ceremony for the seniors, my son graduated from high school last year. And just something stood out to me. It was a seven to one disparity in terms of females to males and what they received. That was staggering to me, right? That's an equity issue, right?
Right.
So, how, you know, so, so not just the ELL students and how were they underserved, but even, even maybe the less obvious things, like the really academically achieving males who couldn't find a scholarship to save their life, right? That, you know, so, I don't know, it's just interesting. I, I would challenge you to look at it from multiple angles, I guess.
Yeah, I, I'm going to strongly support that, and don't forget the obvious.
Well, right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So look at it from different angles, and, and what are we seeing? And then explore.
So is our next step, Tom, then, going to... It seems like we could have discussion even prior to getting the data as well, right? So we, we know that we're, we've asked for data, that could take a little while.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion we ought to have prior to?
I don't know, one, Andy's suggestion was, was move slow. I mean, I've been...
Or take the time you need.
Well, there you go, take the time, don't, don't, right, and that's kind of where, I think Ron's earlier concern and mine was too, I don't want to rush something just to have something.
Right.
I want to make sure it's right. So I'm, so that's where I was kind of trying to figure out where to start, where to start. And to me, I just want, I like to just, I'm, I'm a data guy, I like to just look at data, and it just kind of, and then you use your own eyes and you just, you know, roots on the ground and you just see things. So I, I don't, I, I don't know what the next step is, I want to see some data and see what it tells us.
But I don't, it, it doesn't make sense to have an open-ended ticket. I mean, is there a timeline by which we can expect to see some kind of information that...
Yeah, yeah.
It's all right if you're wrong.
Oh. We've got, we've got ten minutes.
Well, interestingly, because Andy says, you know, let's go slow and take the time we need. Meanwhile, during the training, I was rewriting the district core values.
All by yourself, so we don't have to see that, right?
But I had just looked at, it's, it's easy in a couple of places to integrate an equity lens into our district core values. Just one example, the first one is student engagement resulting in maximum individual growth. If we said something like equitable practices resulting in maximum individual growth, that gives us the teeth in our core values to say that the equitable practices are important to us. But the first question will be, what are, what are our equitable practices? So that would be more like the definition or the lens, yes, what does that mean?
Maybe what we need to do is come back and do this independent of that, right?
And then you take the data, yes, and then you take the data and you apply your equitable practices or your definition to those gaps that we find, so for you.
One example I was just thinking of is our attendance rate. We've been trying to get this attendance at ninety-five percent, it's like beating against the wall. I'm not sure we've actually ever done a focus group with the Russian parents to ask them, what are your ideas about being able to get to ninety-five percent attendance? And then also, like at little schools like Central Hall or Pratton, you know, they have those three or four kids who have the foreign attendance, but I don't think we've ever looked at the commonalities even, okay, so actually, in fifteen of those twenty kids, there's mental health component there. So I, I don't think we dig down to the, we just kind of, oh, well, this kid's this, this kid's that. So I think that already, as we're looking at our data, as we're getting ready to go into the strategic, we can ask principals, hey, I want you three to get together and I want you to brainstorm, what are the commonalities in the kids that are not making ninety-five percent attendance?
Well, I think before you even go there, we are beating our head against the ninety-five percent attendance wall, and have we asked this question, does attendance in our district correlate with academics?
Yeah.
Amen. I've often asked that.
Do we really need to beat ninety-five percent attendance just because the state of Oregon says?
Because honestly, some of our lowest performing kids are here every single day. So it's like, like, is that the battle we should be fighting, the ninety-five percent attendance?
So that'll be a question for the strategic, it's specific to the strategic. It could be that if every kid is on growth or target or whatever, we find that one of the barriers is, this kid's not coming to school enough. Worse, that kid has nothing to do with attendance, but everybody do it, can't get the homework done, because our homes.
And when I took my kids to Disneyland, I lowered your target, I mean, I lowered the actual numbers, but it didn't, my kids, it's not like they were impacted by being gone, right? So, I'm just, you know, we don't know. And the Russian families are gone for religious reasons, right? It has nothing whatsoever to do with whether they're there to learn. And at Bucay, the top, some of the top performers were in the Russian community. And so again, I, I totally agree with that.
I think just ask the different questions.
Ask the different questions.
So before we move on, I do, I, I like the idea of working on, sorry, my point, I think that's rude, I'm sorry. Before, I like the idea of at least some preliminary capturing of ideas we like about definitions, like, because I think that this process that we went through tonight was revealing, and I don't want to lose that, so like, could we, everybody turns in their definitions, or like, I wrote down what people said was important to them, and so it's like, what, can we capture that and then make that a part of some kind of next step?
Start with that, yeah. Get some data and work on definitions. And John, John, you, you suggest us, try to get one person to try to do, or two.
I was actually going to suggest, Jennifer.
Yes, that's, exactly.
And that I've got you to work with Jennifer.
Yes.
On that.
Only one board member, though, only one board member?
You could add somebody else to pick somebody else, pick one to go with you.
I, I, that's, that's dangerous.
Tim's not here.
Tim and her? I would say not, no, they have to be at the training in order to...
I know, I know, I know.
That's fine.
Nobody wants to volunteer?
I will.
All right.
I will.
Good. Yeah, I'll do it, I do a lot of home commitment to...
You're capturing people's thoughts very well, much better than I can, and I can see what you're doing there.
Okay, so would it be reasonable to ask everybody to pass down their, their definitions and circle, circle the words that they thought were important, or write down any other thoughts that they have, or the extra ones?
And Jennifer, if they're doing that, that's my email. So if, if you email me draft, I will be of help.
Awesome, thank you, that is very, very generous, thank you so much.
I hang out in Silver Falls sometimes, so.
I'd like having you here, Tom.
So, Tom, can I ask you to clarify a question?
Yes, please.
So Jennifer and Tom are going to assist with this process.
Yep.
And I think we just need to be in touch, we can do it electronically, we can even put our heads together if we need, attempt to, John, check his availability, or at least use his time electronically as needed. And then it would be great to have some kind of a draft definition, if possible, by the September meeting. I've heard plenty of feedback that your September work session, anyway, would be a good time to at least revisit this topic, even throw a draft out in front of the entire board, and chew on this a little bit more. During the meantime, we can surely address some topics of data. Keep in mind that I, I believe that you're going to give me the head nod on this, you have to give some administrative latitude, which I think we have already, to be able to make some distinctions. I mean, there are hundreds of data points that we can generally pursue. And so I've written down a few key phrases here and words that I think give me some direction, specific especially to underserved populations that are of interest to you. Not necessarily even traditional, but something specific to our underserved populations that may be unique to Silver Falls. And so we'll play with that a little bit as a, as a group and see where we go with that and provide some data. Realistically, Tom, could we have that kind of detailed data by September twenty-fourth? We could have some, but to really get into it, I'm not certain.
No, take your time.
I, I encourage you to have the definition, have some beliefs in place for us to play with the data, and then start back to you in September and see where we go.
Right, right.
And my, my assumption is that we will, well, maybe that's a wrong assumption, but I'm really concerned about the kids who aren't graduating, so that I'm assuming that that's a place that you're going to look to, to, and you probably already are looking at what commonalities are and...
Yes, but we can do a better job.
Okay.
And just a word on that, too, like, if, if one of the disparities or one of the areas of improvement is high school graduation, that doesn't mean that you focus on eleventh and twelfth graders, right? So you start looking at what are some of those root causes, and we might be going all the way back to eighth, ninth, tenth grade in terms of work to address that priority.
That's a good point, because there are some indicators that we see in elementary and middle school perhaps that give us clues, because we, we can't just look at high school, we have to look at kindergarten, pre-kindergarten on, so, thank you for that.
Because it's good to know the data and see what's happening, especially in the elementary. And then as they move forward, most of our schools are K through eight.
And that's where attendance might be the important part, is that's how we see who needs help way before they get high.
Yep. Yeah, so much performance data on K eight, because we, we just test every...
Yeah, every six weeks.
Every... We watch them grow or not grow, they can fly. So that's an, that's an easy one, and then we can just evaluate that in populations.
Clarification, so you mentioned the post-education survey. Is that something that we're actually doing in practice now, or is that a thought?
We stalk them on Facebook. That's our fur plant.
It, yeah, we don't have, we don't have a person dedicated to tracking down those kids. In the past, we had contracted with the service, but I think that's going to hit and miss. And so that's one of those ideas of, that's something that's important to us, and you look at allocating resources too.
Yeah.
A person who sold job is to do that.
I think that's fantastic.
I think the state is looking to...
There's a couple of groups at the state legislative level.
Not yet, obviously, but they're working on it.
It's a challenging task, when you think about seniors doing this. Oh, yeah, right.
And every district has the same need, so it makes sense that the state's working on it.
Can we just...
Planet ship red night?
Probably could.
Would you understand?
Maybe not red night.
Yeah, well, I mean, eight o'clock, anything else I could add, John? I just...
No, I, I think, what I really appreciate is that you're taking ground on this, and that you're moving at the pace, you know, that we're streaming.
Yeah, for me, I just, I just want to say, I just enjoyed this presentation and discussion. I just, it's, it's a topic that's hard to grasp, and I think you've done a great job getting started through it.
At some point, I would love to see also, not now, but at some point, what we're doing right, what we're doing in the, like, specifically at some point, because I think that'll help clarify a lot of things, instead of just looking for things that aren't working.
When Andy shares that data, he could also share some of those areas that a lot of schools have huge gaps and you don't.
Right, exactly.
So, I mean, that could be meaningful data as well as disparities.
I think it's equally important to look at both, both of them. That way we know what direction to go, or what our thought process could be.
But I talked about this in the last meeting, but that's something I learned, I learned when we were at the conference, is that making sure that we're celebrating the successes that are really specific to our goals is important, because that shows that we're, you know, we're efficacious, I don't know how to say that word, but we can do, that we're making a difference, and that it's motivating. You know, it's not, it's not always motivating to just keep saying, what are the problems, what are the problems, what are the problems? You have to throw in, you know, like, celebrate success and, and help motivate everybody in the system, so I think that's very important.
Yep, it is.
Very good, so we're going to continue this discussion, September, our next work session?
September twenty-fourth. Well, you have one a week from tomorrow, but, but another training, but September twenty-fourth is your next training.
It's our next true work session, and we'll continue, we'll have, maybe we'll have some data to start to chew on, possibly not, we'll have a starter definition. Go from there, okay? All right.
Thank you very much, all of you, it was a pretty helpful discussion, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much for coming. This was excellent, excellent presentation, and I'm glad you're here to help us formulate what we can do and mold in our district. So thank you very much.
Very happy to be here.
Yeah.
And appreciative of your work. And Debbie, thank you for the two and a half bottles of wine.
Thanks, John, we'll be in touch. Okay, very good. Next is some executive session, so we're going to adjourn to executive session under ORS 1926602B to consider the dismissal or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent who does not request an open hearing. Silver Falls Education Association grievance, and under ORS 1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, Silver Falls Education Association grievance. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, let's return to open session. And we have an action item number seven. Do I have a motion relating to the Silver Falls Education Association grievance?
Yes, I move to uphold the administration's decision on the grade submitted on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, anymore, does anybody have any more business? Okay, seeing none, being adjourned.